Welcome to our special meeting and let me just say that in the eighteen years that I've been here in office, we've never had a special meeting at ten AM. Ever and yet alone to have a special meeting and this much community members show up so I want to thank you for taking time off of work, time off of school, time off of senior center, time off of wherever you're at to show up and and be here, be present in such a very critical decision that the council has to make and so I really want to thank you. I also want to tell you for those that are going to speak that this is a democracy and we welcome your comments and nobody will be retaliated against and I know there are people that are fearful about being retaliated against on the council members, rest assured that if you feel you're getting retaliated or somebody's coming in on you, let me know because we're going to be bringing that out to light. Um, that is very, very important. So thank you all. There's probably about sixty, seventy of you here that have mobilized in what is now the second special meeting of the year. We haven't even had a regular meeting, but obviously there's a council majority here that wants to move a certain way. Welcome to the agenda again of the special meeting of the city of Coachella. The council sitting as a Coachella sanitary district, Coachella fire protection district, Coachella financing authority, Coachella education and government access cable channel corporation, Coachella water authority successor agency to the Coachella redevelopment agency and the Coachella parks and recreation foundation. It's January fourteenth, once again, special meeting at ten AM. I'm gonna call this meeting to order and I'm gonna ask the clerk to note for the record, the attendance and I'll move on approval of the agenda. At this time, council board corporation authority may announce any items being pulled from the agenda or continue to another date. Uh, Mr. City manager, are there any changes to the agenda?
No changes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to our pledge of allegiance. I'm gonna ask our city clerk if you could leave us, leave us some.
If everyone can please rise.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We want to move on now to public comments on closed session items. I'm gonna ask the city clerk to uh if she could read or start with the public comments. I do know we have a number of people on Zoom. We have a number of letters that have been written and we have all you in attendance. I want to thank you again for being here on this uh special day and important day.
If that's correct. So we do have a number of public comments here. We have one on Zoom um that I'm aware of. There might be more. So if you can please help me and to identify who is on Zoom, we can start with um the one on Zoom and then we can move on with everyone that is here present and then I will move on to the written communications. So is the gentleman that is on Zoom is Adrian Ruiz, if you can unmute them.
Adrian, go ahead.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Well, yeah, sure. I'll get it started. Hi, city council. Good morning, Coachella. My name is Adrian Reese and uh I just wanted to take some time out of my day to drop in because I wanted to express my concern about the decision to remove Gabriel Martin from his position as city manager. Council, if you aren't aware, I'm a former employee of the city and during my tenure with the city, I worked under Seda Jimenez, the economic development director and alongside our department and under the direct supervision of the city manager, we were able to secure some historical grants and we won millions of dollars from both federal and state funding sources, more than we have ever received as a city and the funding that we received was absolutely critical in supporting projects that are going to directly benefit the people of Coachella. We received funding to improve infrastructure. We received funding to create housing. We received funding to implement beautification projects throughout the city, enhance our parks, you name it. And council, the people of the city, I believe, are taking notice with the work that our department has done, with the work that other city departments have done within the last several years, all of which were under the direct supervision of and and the leadership of Dr. Martin. And the residents are proud of the direction that Coachella is heading in and we are excited about the momentum that we have as a city and they're excited to see what's next. And so my question is council and I hope that everyone can get an answer is why are we trying to fix something that's not broken? And with all due respect, I truly believe that if the residents of the city, the people who voted you all into office with the hopes that you'll vote on issues that will positive positively affect them, if they are prioritized before making this decisions and decisions alike, then I believe that today the decision is clear and it's to spend our focus elsewhere to continue the work that the city has been doing. It's not to say it's take steps back. It's not to ruin the relationships we have between our city and other entities and slow down the progress that we've worked so hard to build. And uh anyways, I end with this. The people of Coachella are watching today and this vote. This vote is going to send a powerful message. It will let the people of Coachella know whether this council prioritizes the needs of its constituents or whether political agendas take precedence and I hope that the residents of Coachella get what they deserve and that is ultimately leadership that values transparency and puts the community's best interests at the forefront of all the decisions that are being made and as of right now with the meeting being set at ten AM on a work, on a workday, preventing the community from voicing their opinions, right? And to let Carlos go on a whim who did so much good work for the city, it doesn't seem like we are considering our residents before we are making these decisions, but I have uh I have faith that the people here today are or the council members today are going to make the right decision and that's obviously to allow Dr. Martin to continue what he's been doing. So that said, thank you, council.
Thank you, Adrian, and I'm going to move on to those that are here in person.
And I've also gotten some texts about people wanting to come on the Zoom, but I guess there's some technical difficulties. A live stream isn't coming on, right? So we can double check that, Jason. Appreciate you.
Uh, we currently have eighty-one people on Zoom.
Eighty-one people on Zoom. Perfect.
Great. So um I will go ahead and take some, move on to taking some of these comments on I will taking comments for those that are here in person and then we can move forward with those that are on Zoom. Okay, so the first person, if you can please walk up to the podium is Jesus Gonzalez.
Mayor and council, um I uh Denise, obviously you're you're a one day notice, right? And your strategy of of calling a meeting in one day on a Tuesday at ten o'clock, it didn't work, right? It didn't, it didn't work. Look at the people that are here. I I uh Denise, I've watched your political career and uh I'm not going to get into uh we all have shortfalls, but I'm not going to get into your personal life. But I will tell you that when your personal life uh hinders the possibility of the excitement that we have in Coachella, both in the business world uh and in the community, all we gotta do is look around, look at the parks, look at what we delivered to the people in this community. I happen to have been here a long time and the progress that I've seen is something to be very, very excited about, right? Yaida, I spoke to you on election day. I um I ran into your husband who I knew, who I didn't know was your husband and I've known him for a long time and we have a good friendship. We actually spoke for about an hour in front of uh city hall here and when I got done, I went to Bagduma and I spoke to you. I actually walked up and and I said, hi, Yaida, I wish you the best of luck. I had no idea who your husband was and I asked to meet with you. And the reason that I was excited to see you run when I found out who you were was I believe that a person of serious nature, right? An investigator. Uh, I I believe you're a detective with the Riverside County Sheriff's Department. I believe that you would come into a setting like this and that you wouldn't be goaded around by the person sitting next to you on false pretense and made up stories and lies. And you, Mr. Figueroa, shame on you for what you do. You're so consumed in your personal lifestyle that you don't care about the people of this community and these kinds of actions and these types of short notice meetings, you all, I I seen your literature. Transparency, transparency, that's all you talked about. That's all you talk about. You're telling me that being transparent is calling a one, a one day notice meeting on a Tuesday to take such a critical action against an individual who I believe is the best city manager this city has ever had? And it's not, I don't care. There's an old saying that says, don't tell me who you are. Show me what you've done and he can show you what he's done. There's another, there's another old saying. There's another old saying. There's another, another old saying that nobody cares how much you know unless they know you care. I know this man cares. Have a a personal relationship with this man. Well, all I gotta do is look at his performance. So shame on you for calling this meeting, Denise Togado, and I hope to God that if this man is removed, I hope to God that you get recalled.
Thank you. Our next comment is for Ana Alvarado. There are a lot of people outside, so I'm going to give her a couple of minutes, moments to walk in.
There's a lot of people here. Thank you for showing up.
So um we're gonna, I'm gonna put her aside and if she does return, we'll give her an opportunity to speak. The next person is Juan Alvarado. Juan Alvarado. Juan, oh, you can step up to the podium and provide us your comment. Thank you.
Hello. Hello. Hi, everybody. Um I'm from Rancho Fifty-One, uh the unincorporated area of Coachella. That is in the process of being annexed. Um and so my, my comment here is more uh we're in the process of being annexed. We've been in conversations over two years with the current manager and his staff and if change happens, does that go out, out the door? Um, all those two years of work. Uh, so that's, that's a concern that we bring from the unincorporated area that's in the process of of being annexed. Um and so again, we've been working with the current manager and his staff for over two years. That's who Coachella, you know, brought to us and so again, if there's change, is that trash? And if it is, then you know, is it even worth us annexing it to Coachella? Like, do we start over again? We don't want to start over. Um, that's a concern we bring. Uh, so that's, that's all I have to say about this.
Thank you. I have two Juan Alvarados. One is senior and one is junior. Not here. Okay, is it senior or junior? Do you know? Okay, I will put that aside so that when he does get here. Okay, the next um person is Claudia Lua Alvarado.
I'm already here. Hello, hello, everyone. I'm Claudia Lua Alvarado and I'm also the owner of Rancho Fifty-One. Uh, I am here uh for the same similar reasons. Um eighty of us of the ranch owners on P two that own about two hundred acres have been um you know, we've been to so many meetings with India and Coachella and we decided to make the move to annexation to Coachella. Um Gabriel Martin has been um honestly like key person to help us with all the process with his team and um you know, we have spent a lot of time with him and his team with um short term goals, long term goals, business meetings, separate meetings, and that's my truth. Um he is someone that we have uh taken the time to work with with um goals of the ranches with the dates and the train idea and all these fun, amazing ideas that have given us this dream of being part of Coachella. Um, I'm standing here as a possible citizen, uh resident of of Coachella and when I, when I tell you guys I'm being honest is that that is my truth. Like, I've been working with him and the team and I would be here and stand for each and every single one of you because I'm going to say the truth. He's helped us. Um and the team has helped us and I just want to make sure that you know, he's promised us things, he's come through with it, helped spoke to the city council, you guys voted on certain things and we appreciate that. We need to be fair. I think that when somebody helps you, you help them or you're you're there for them in that, in that certain way. Um, that's how I I've gotten to know um Gabriel Martin by the support that he has given us. Um and having said that, um, you know, when the news broke, all the ranchos started calling each other and we're very, we were, we got really nervous because um the last conversation that we have that was three weeks ago is a key conversation that and he knows and um what's his name? Casulo? I always get it wrong. So um Casulo also mentioned like they're going to work with us to get us the water line and that's crucial, especially now with the fires in LA like you, you guys know, um, water lines are very expensive. So that's something that was promised. So you know, after working for two years with this So, you know, after working for two years with this group and them and, and seeing all the, 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 just spending so many hours, and I'm not kidding you guys, I'm, I'm saying the truth. I just want to make sure that, you know, that everything moves forward and, um, you guys are going to make your decision. I'm, I'm, you know, I'm talking to you guys with my truth, um, but I just want to make sure that everybody's held accountable with all the promises that were made to us, the ranch owners, the eighty-plus ranch owners, the school, and everyone that's around us, because we did put a lot of time, a lot of time. And we saw the, you know, the two cities, and we decided to move forward with Coachella, so I'm here to, to ask you, you know, to understand where I stand, and that's my truth. And I would do it for each and every single one of you too, the way I'm doing it for Gabriel right now, and I mean it. Thank you.
Thank you, Claudia. Our next speaker is Neftalí Galárez.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. It's very unfortunate that many residents had take time off to the work to attend this important meeting. Scheduling a special meeting at ten AM on a Tuesday feels like a deliberate attempt to suppress community voices. It obviously didn't work. In our four years in office, this never happened. As many voter, as many residents came, we never did such a thing, even as my chairman, as, as a school member, to schedule a meeting at ten AM. Such a disrespect to our community, our residents, and our staff. As you've heard and will continue to hear from city employees, community members, our senior citizens, Dr. Martin has been an invaluable asset to our city. Four years ago, the council unanimously voted to hire him, and just six months ago, we unanimously voted to renew his contract, just six months ago, with no voice and no vote of concern, including four of you that were, that, that are sitting there today, were there six months ago too. So what has changed? This isn't about his performance or what's best for our city, it's about political posturing. Council members, the God of Figueroa, are flexing their newfound majority, and unfortunately, it's coming at the expense of our taxpayers, staff morale, and the stability of city operations. Councilmember Perez, as someone new to the council, you're being thrust into a divisive and unnecessary situation. I understand how difficult these early decisions can be. In my first term, in my first few months, I was faced with a similar vote that challenged me to think critically and independently. In my first couple of meetings, there was a vote to terminate the assistant city, assistant to the city manager. While the council members that supported me supported that decision, I knew that I needed to stand independently. And I voted as such. I did not join them in that effort, and I chose to wait. I knew that I didn't have enough information to vote to terminate someone I hadn't worked or supervised. You have that position to do that too. Dr. Martin's performance evaluation is scheduled for May. If you come to the conclusion by then that a change is necessary, you'll have the time and the perspective to make that thoughtful decision. But rushing this vote, as someone that works in public office, as someone that was, works as a prosecutor, this vote today only sends a message that your actions are dictated by others, not by your own convictions. I urge you all to lead with integrity and caution. Don't allow this to become a precedent for future decisions. Take the time to do what's right for the city and its residents. Let's keep Dr. Martin as her, as a city manager and Carlos Campos as her city attorney. Thank you.
Our next comment is from Victor García.
Buenos dias, buenos dias a todos, buenos dias, Sebastián. Les pido una disculpa, yo voy a hablar en español, ¿está bien?
Sí, está bien.
Muchas gracias. Pues bienvenido a todos los compañeros de la ciudad. Y este, como han comentado, verdad, algunos miembros de programa. Y primeramente, pues, la hora, verdad. No es muy conveniente porque muchos de nosotros tenemos que trabajar y trabajar fuera a veces. Entonces, por eso quizás, yo creo que no vino el cincuenta por ciento del total de los que conformamos el, el bloquecito que estamos tratando. Y en otro, yo también veo un poco inapropiado el recinto porque está pequeño, incluso se tiene que estar llamando a las personas que quizás están más afuera y como que no es muy apropiado, pero en fin, lo organizaron y le damos las gracias de todas maneras. Pero tengo que aclararles que es un inconveniente que se pasó por alto, ¿verdad? Bueno, pues entonces nosotros venimos con gusto porque ya tenemos tiempo tratando este asunto. Y las personas que han estado representando a la ciudad hemos tenido una buena correlación entre ellos y nosotros. Nos han transmitido seguridad, confianza. Incluso en una ocasión, yo también participé en, ahí en aquel recinto porque a veces estábamos inconformes, indecisos de aceptar a Coachella para firmar como que dentro de nosotros había, porque ya no se nota tanto, inseguridad, incertidumbre. Yo tomé la palabra, incluso platiqué personalmente con algunos de que deberíamos de darle la oportunidad a la ciudad de Coachella para que nos transmitieran ese mensaje de que ellos querer adoptar a nuestro espacio de tierra. Y surtió efecto porque empezamos a, las primeras veces empezamos a afirmar, pues qué es lo que se ocupaba, las firmas de nosotros para poder, uh, obtener Coachella estos terrenos, porque ustedes lo saben, Indio también estaba queriendo poseerlas. Sin embargo, yo fui a Indio también, y en Indio otro tipo de servidores, porque ustedes son servidores, pues, del pueblo. Y incluso yo tomé la palabra y les dije, habíamos, yo no sé si diez o quince personas, y yo les digo, oye, algo está pasando aquí, Leo, o no. Hicieron propaganda, invitación, y luego me dice, por ahí uno en forma de broma, es que en Coachella les dan comida. Y nos ofrecen un bocadillo, y se les agradece, pero más que nada, nos ofrecen su confianza, su amistad. Y, y la gente estamos muy animados con eso. Incluso nosotros estamos de sorpresa viendo que aquí a, a Gabriel Martín parece que va a desaparecer del programa, igual que yo, algunas personas pensamos que si fuera posible conservarlo como, como asignándolo, comisionado al, al proyecto, porque nosotros con este equipo ya estamos en plena confianza y sentimos de lo contrario. Va a empezar alguien más. Ellos ya nos han prometido, seguramente de parte de ustedes, buenas promesas, del agua, el drenaje, todo, y, y este, estamos nosotros comprometiéndonos con ellos. ¿Verdad? Entonces yo les pido, y quizás a nombre de mis compañeros, si pudieran, este, comisionarlo a él. No sé si a terminar el programa o quizá a que nosotros veamos resultados de lo que nos estaban prometiendo, porque ellos se han comprometido con nosotros, y le tenemos a bien y les agradecemos, ¿verdad? Pero ustedes tienen la última palabra, aunque en realidad todos reciprocamente tenemos que servirnos ciudad y pueblo. Entonces, normal, pido yo y a nombre de ellos también, de mis compañeros, que consideren un poquito eso porque nos está haciendo a nosotros su incomodidad.
Perdón, Vito.
Muchas gracias.
Gracias, Vic.
Gracias. Gracias.
Me pasé un poco, muchas gracias.
Gracias.
Sí, muchas gracias. So, I, I, okay. So I just want to remind everyone, I would like to give everyone an opportunity to speak. I appreciate everyone that is here in support of Dr. Gabriel Martin. So if we can just be respectful of the three minutes time that we have on the, on the screen here. Más les quiero recordar que muchas gracias por estar aquí en, en apoyar a, a Gabriel, Dr. Gabriel Martin. Solamente les quiero recordar que para ser respetuosos y darle suficiente tiempo a todos que están aquí también en línea a dar sus comentarios, y por favor, podemos estar dentro los tres minutos que están en la pantalla, lo agradecemos, gracias. Entonces voy a hablar a la siguiente, a la siguiente persona. The next speaker is Vanessa Aguilar. Vanessa Aguilar.
Hello, good morning, City of Coachella and Mayor. My name is Vanessa Aguilar. I've been a resident of the Coachella Valley for all my life, so I come here.
You speak into the mic, please.
I come here to express.
Sorry, thank you.
I come here to express a concern as a resident of the City of Coachella regarding the recent decision to remove our current city manager. I believe this action poses a serious risk to both the ongoing and future development of the city. The removal of the city manager may jeopardize the ability to secure project funding base and also the approval of which the leadership in which the city manager approves upon. Additionally, the financial burden of severance costs and salary of a new city manager is detrimental to the Coachella, especially given the city's limited financial resources. This decision could lead to instability affecting the city's capacity to attract and maintain lucrative funding opportunities. The City of Coachella has made significant strides in its development and is not only, not justifiable, but to remove this, to not remove, to remove this leadership without a clear and compelling reason. I urge you to reconsider this action in light of potential negative consequences of the city's future growth and financial stability. Given these factors, it seems prudent to carefully consider the broader implications of replacing the city manager at this time. The city's progress and stability depending on the experienced knowledgeable leadership and sudden change without clear justification would undermine the positive momentum of the resident community and city staff has worked so hard to build upon. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Rubén González. Rubén González.
Life of President of City Coachella, I'm also the Vice Chairman of the Coachella Planning Commission. I just had a couple of questions, and my question is going to be directed to, to your council member, Perez. So, Mrs. Perez, you just got in as a councilwoman, do you, you know, I would think that you would be here at least a year if you would pick up some, some negative stuff on our city manager. Do you have a list of stuff that you could share with the community that the reason you're opposing, uh, or trying to get rid of our city manager?
With all due respect at this time, I'm not going to comment.
Wow, okay, so I just wanted to clarify it for the community, so the community could hear that. But, uh, I hope you guys decide different today. This is, I hate to see this kind of stuff happen in our city. This is just the beginning of it. The negativity and all the chaos you guys are going to create if you guys get rid of our city manager. And I want to just make this very clear. Mr. Martin is probably one of our best city managers we've ever had. I've been, I was born and raised, I've been involved in politics for probably over forty years, so I've seen him come and go. But if you guys make that decision, I just want to make it real clear, that you guys are going to create a lot of chaos, and if you get rid of him, believe me, he'll be back. It's just going to be a short period, he's going to be absent. But I hope you guys really look in deep in your heart and really change your heart and, and, uh, decide that Mr. Martin is the best thing that we can have in our city. Thank you so much.
Next up, we have Yaya Ortiz. Yaya Ortiz.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I want to thank everyone for giving me the opportunity to be here, and I want to thank the city council in general for all our support towards myself and our, and Culturas, Music and Art. But I'm here to advocate for Gabriel Martin. I never had that, that many conversations with him until one day I asked him a question, and I called him and text him, "Hey, Gabriel, what's going on with this project? Are you taking our ideas, blah, 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 blah?" And he goes, gives me a call right away. He goes, "No, Yaya, he was really calm, he's approachable, and he's been one of our biggest advocates." I fear that if he's gone, all our projects for the art center and other programs that we've had, it's, it's going to come to a halt, and we don't have time. We have a community that needs our help, we have a bunch of kids who need that art center and other programs that are going to be instilled in this community. Most of you, I, I want to say, I said for Yaida, I don't know who she is, or I never heard of her, till she got elected. For the most part, you guys have, have a lot of similarities. You have voted a lot for the same thing, and I know that you're here because you cared for the community and you have your reasons. But this should not be one of the reasons. Gabriel Martin is an amazing person, extraordinary person, kind. Gives you a hug, and, well, it hurts, but it gives you nice hugs, you know, like, yay, you know? But it's like, we need to keep him here. That's not, you guys have done amazing work. I can see, people see the progress. I have a lot of comments from, from outsiders who are not in the community, who don't live, but they see, they see us, they see what's going on, and I'm thinking it's unfair, you know? And I'm not here to threaten people or anything, I just want to plead to your heart to please keep him on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Ana García. On this same slip, we have also, if you can just be ready, Jesús López and Zulma Hernández.
Hello. Hello, good morning. My name is Ana García, and I'm the Community Engagement Manager for Coachella Valley Unified School District. And I'm here in support of Dr. Gabriel Martin. I'm opposing, um, council's decision on trying to remove him from his position. And I have worked with Dr. Martin closely and especially during the summer for the student internship program, he was always available on, even on his scheduled days off, on Fridays, to Zoom with me to answer questions. He has been to several of our, of our community events in support of and has shown that he supports the Coachella Valley Unified School District as well as our team. I have some of the team members here, and now I'm going to pass the mic to Jesús López.
Good morning, everyone. Um, a little bit of Dr. Martin, um, just as, um, my boss, Ana García, was saying. He worked with us very close with the Coachella Promise. Some of you, we came earlier, um, throughout the year when we presented a presentation of the Coachella Promise. So you see how hard work we did as with, um, Dr. Martin. Me and myself, um, went a couple of times with Dr. Martin to talk to him about, things about the Coachella Promise, getting the video ready for, um, the end of the, um, of the Coachella Promise internship program, as well, always greeting us, um, well, welcoming us and ready to answer questions, even giving us his cellphone number for any questions and concerns that we have, if we can help. So hopefully with this, um, hearing us out with Dr. Martin, hopefully he could stay in. And that's the same as, sometimes we tell our students at our school, is to make good choices. Hopefully you guys can make the good choice of keeping him on.
Now I also have, and she put in a public comment as well, Dr. Francis Esparsa.
Good afternoon. Is it afternoon? No, it's morning, morning, early.
We can reset the clock.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Dr. Francis Esparsa, Superintendent of Coachella Valley Unified School District. And I'm here today to not just ask that you reconsider, um, the possibility of removing, uh, Mr. Gabriel Martin, Dr. Gabriel Martin, uh, from his seat, but consider the work for your city. I'm from Los Angeles. And in Los Angeles, when we come together, we come together to make tough decisions. Now I'm here in Coachella and I see some decisions that need to be made. And I work in a school district with seven bosses and they don't all think the same. You only have four, mayor. But with seven bosses who have different initiatives, who want different things, who come from different parts of Coachella, but need to do one thing, put students first. I ask that you put your city first, that you put your community first. You have to put all of the dislikes behind and see the good work that has been done by Dr. Martin and by many of you, I know you are new here and I, I'm pushing for you to continue the good work that has been done because being here, I'm proud to say that now I'm from the Coachella Valley. I'm from the Coachella Valley. My grandparents were, so even though I was born in LA, I'm from the Coachella Valley. I'm here to fight for my students, I'm here to fight for community and part of that community is our families, our families need you to work together just the same way they need our board members to work together and they're doing that. And it's difficult work. It's hard to have hard conversations, but we're having those hard conversations within our board and our board is communicating with each other. And they're doing a better job on the dais, in the sessions that we have together. And it comes down to your leadership, bringing everyone here together to do the right thing for your community. I want to thank you for giving us the $500,000 for the Coachella Promise so our students could work and support the economic development in the city of Coachella and make sure that we are growing leaders in our district, that we are growing students that are going to become our next entrepreneurs within the city of Coachella to keep that economic development growing. That didn't come from anyone except for all of you working together and Dr. Martin supporting us. And so I want to thank you for that, I want you to think about the decisions that you need to make and have those hard conversations, but don't remove people from here yet. Thank you.
Next speaker is Ariana Rodriguez. Adriana Rodriguez and following Adriana will be, I'm sorry, Ariana, will be Joe Mota.
What the resident just mentioned is if I speak Spanish because they would like to also understand what is being said, I'll do my best to translate my public comment that I drafted on a very short notice and I see that my clock is going, so I'll go ahead and begin. Good morning, members of the council, my name is Ariana Rodriguez. I'm a lifelong Coachella Valley resident. I'm here today because I feel deeply disappointed by the timing of this meeting. Scheduling it at 10:00 AM on a weekday makes it nearly impossible for many working residents, especially those in middle and low income jobs to be here. Dr. Gabriel has done so much for our community. They have dedicated their time and effort and heart to improving our city. It's visual, it's there, it's in your face, our community, our beautiful Coachella is thriving and I also want to extend that gratitude to you for the work that you guys do here. And so as you can see, there's a lot of residents outside and they came to show their appreciation and also their support. So despite the challenges, they are here today with us, withstanding the heat, I was just outside, I'm a little parched and even going without pay to show their support. Among these are seniors, city workers, CBUSD district employees who you just heard from and youth, all of whom represent the heart of this community. Their presence demonstrates how much Dr. Gabriel means to us, but it also highlights the barriers others face in participating due to the timing of this meeting. This isn't just about scheduling, it's about fairness and ensuring, ensuring that everyone in our city has an equal voice in decisions that affect us all, because they do, they, any decision that you guys make affects us all. And I urge you to prioritize transparency, accessibility for folks by holding future meetings at times when working families and more residents can attend and participate, that's my ask. Publico de este día es poniendo conciencia a que las juntas que se ponen en participación a las 10 a.m. no nos deja a todos los residentes, especialmente nuestros trabajadores agrícolas y otras personas que trabajan durante las mañanas para poder atender estas juntas. Es muy necesario que el consilio aquí tenga en mente que esto no nos previene de poder decir nuestros comentarios públicos y apreciar nuestro apreciación para el doctor Gabriel y la evaluación que se le está haciendo hoy. Como siempre, we're a thriving community, we're an awesome community, really proud to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Joe Mota and following Joe Mota will be Armin. I apologize, I can't read the last name, it's P.A. Basonyan or Baronyan? Armin?
Thank you, Joe.
Good morning. Honorable mayor, honorable city council, I just want to express the gross negligence disrespect of having this meeting at 10:00 AM and not allowing many working residents to attend this meeting and express their comments and show their the way and express how much the city has moved, right, in a positive manner. And here, I was invited, I saw it on the news and saw what had happened and wanted to come as an individual that has organized twenty plus years in the Coachella Valley. I'm not a resident of Coachella, but I have done a lot of my work here in the city of Coachella, in the eastern Coachella Valley. And I just want to say that Coachella has never been so open for collaboration and positive movement since city manager Dr. Martin has been on board, right? We've done so much as in organizations that I have worked with or am working with to be able to increase the accessibility for residents of Coachella to have a healthy and stable living, right? And so I want you to reconsider your decision of possibly removing Dr. Martin from city manager. He has been nothing but helpful, accessible and welcoming to be able to come and work with the city of Coachella. And as I express my support for Dr. Martin, I also want to express my support for attorney Carlos Campos. A homegrown individual that went to the university from farmworking family, got his law degree, came back and became the city manager of Coachella. What pride does that come with? To see, and I worked with the UFW, not seeing the lives of how farmworkers do whatever they can to push their kids to college. And he went, did it, came back. When he was a graduate, when he was at CB High, he would volunteer to record the city council meetings. And look at him now, are proud to have Carlos Campos as the city attorney of Coachella. But that didn't come. You guys made that decision, we're ever thinking of what we do with our homegrown individuals. I've had conversations with a lot of you, except Councilwoman Perez, but there's a lot of speak of, oh, we want our students to come back and grow here in Coachella and come and serve Coachella. Well, we have them here and you guys have fired them. So please reconsider that, please think about what you're doing to the city of Coachella by removing Dr. Martin. Thank you.
Thank you, Armin. Armin Basonyan? I hope I am pronouncing that correctly, if not, please correct me.
Morning, my name is Armin Peronian.
Oh, thank you.
I'm here today in support of Gabriel Martin. As a business owner in the city of Coachella, my experience with working with Gabriel and city employees who report directly to him has been first class. His work ethic, his responsiveness and willingness to address problems business owners face is a refreshing change from the norm when dealing with government. It is just, I'm here to give my opinion, I think it's a privilege for the residents of the city of Coachella to have Gabriel Martin as their city manager and I just wanted to come in and give my support, thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Raquel Terrones. Raquel Terrones and following Raquel is Fernando Escalante.
Raquel, Raquel, pasale, Raquel.
Fernando?
Buenos dias a todos ustedes. Esto, voy a hablar en español, yo no domino bien el inglés, pero quiero expresar lo que yo siento de lo que está pasando. Este tipo de actividades, este tipo de actividades es muy común en muchas partes, pero lo que yo siento y pienso es que hay que darle honor a quien honor merece. Una persona que ha sido buena para su comunidad y siempre estado al pendiente de darle solución a los problemas y ayudar es lo que nosotros aquí realmente necesitamos. Yo tengo poco en este lugar y estoy sumamente contento, yo venía de indio, porque salía todo paliado allá, no lo tratan como debe ser, aquí fue muy bonito. Entonces, por eso es que yo con este hombre, estoy como le, estoy contento, pero en ustedes está, verdad? Tratar de sincronizarse y aceptarse porque es la única manera en mantener a la misma comunidad contenta, así como yo me siento. Así ustedes también tienen que hacer que la gente esté contente, contenta, porque si no, a ustedes pues les va a llegar el problema. ¿Por qué? Porque están descojando de un derecho legítimo a una persona que logró a pulso llegar a donde está, ahí tiene su familia. Y todos así está ustedes, también tienen su familia y están pensando que ustedes llegan sus logros y les vaya muy bien. Pues a este no lo echen para afuera, inclúyanlo con ustedes, no le quiten lo que ya logró. Es todo lo que tengo que decir.
Gracias, entonces Raquel no va, no, okay. Next up is Nick Mesa. And following Nick Mesa, we have Freeman Swink.
Hi, good morning, mayor and council. Just wanted to come over and say, come up and say a couple of words. When I just heard about this news of the Mr. Gabriel Martin here being removed from his position, the first thought that I had was why, why is this happening, why is it happening now? He's, my personal experience in working with Gabriel has been, well, about three years that he's been in this position. Prior to that, I had already worked with him here in the city. The second question I had to myself was why and how? How is this decision being made and who is making the decision on moving this forward? When I heard that this came up on last week after a couple of weeks break that the city takes and then coming in on a Tuesday and having a special meeting to make this decision, the first thing was who's making the decision? And when it, when coming to find out that it takes several votes on a council, that being one of the votes with Mrs. Yadira Perez being so new to the council, the other question that I had for myself and that most people hear is, is how is this decision, how is a vote so new to this council member able to reflect on a decision being so important? She hasn't, like said earlier, she hasn't really had much experience with Mr. Gabe. And these concerns concern us because not only being a lifelong Coachella resident, also a business owner, what happens in the city affects us all, right? It affects us not only as residents, but our business, everybody here that's coming up as a business owner has the same concern, what's going to happen? We've been working on projects. Usually when change like this happen with important decisions, it's because something is not right. We see a lot of progress, we have a lot of, the schools being rebuilt, a lot of apartments, streets being repaired, a lot of positive action, right? The, everyone here is in the same support, we feel very positive in the direction the city is taking, but these type of decisions make us question how are these decisions being made with such an important person and part of the city, right? Like where's the problem? We always hear these rumors of people wanting change, 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 that's the only word being shared, but what change? We're happy as business owners and residents, we'd like to get a little bit more feedback on the type of change that you guys are asking for, especially with a position like this, this is a major change, it's not a small change that's happening. We're talking about the city manager who's been involved with all of these projects that are here today and projects that are still looking to be finished. So I wanted to come up and share my concerns, which are the ones that I just expressed now and also ask that you guys consider that, consider that, especially Mrs. Perez, you know, like I'm echoing what was said earlier. Just consider the fact that give it a little bit time and see if, when in the near future, this helps make a better decision.
Thank you. Next up, we have Freeman Swink and following Freeman Swink, we have Grace Martin.
Council members, Mr. Mayor, thank you. My name is Freeman Swink, I'm the site leader at Armtech Defense Technologies here in Coachella. As you probably know, Armtech has been a major employer in the city here for the past sixty years. We employ hundreds of residents here in the city of Coachella alone and the surrounding area. Over the past year, we've been working with Dr. Martin and other city staff in a major expansion that we're doing in support of the US government and US warfighter. This effort is quadrupling our production, it's doubling our staff, we're bringing in lots of new jobs and it's requiring us to build lots of new facilities on our existing site. This is necessarily going to require continued collaboration with the city staff and the city manager to make this happen. So due to our critical support of the US warfighter in this expansion, we're concerned that the disruption that this will cause changing the city manager at this point in time. It will result in slowdown of our ability to bring those jobs to the city, result in slowdown of our ability to serve the US warfighter. So we hope you take this into account as you go into the closed session when you make your decision. We do not think that this is a good decision to make at this point in time. Thank you.
Grace? Grace Martin?
Good morning, members of the city council, mayor. Thank you for allowing me to stop and to speak today. My name is Grace Martin, I'm here with my kids, Giovanni and Galileo Martin. And we are the family of our current city manager, Gabriel Martin. As I stand here before you, not only as a resident of Coachella, but also as a wife, a mother, who has the privilege of watching my husband Gabriel Martin dedicate his heart and soul to this community. Gabriel has been with the city for almost eight years and a city manager for the past three and a half years, a role that he took on with deepest sense of responsibility and commitment. Although we are not originally from this area, when Gabriel was given the opportunity to serve this city, our family made the decision to move here without hesitation and move Coachella, make Coachella our home. Nevertheless, we knew that Gabriel's work ethic, integrity and passion for creating a better future would be a tremendous asset to Coachella. Since then, he has not only proven us right, but exceeded all expectations. Gabriel has brought meaningful change to this city, he has worked tirelessly, often sacrificing his personal time and sleep, and I know that I've been there to address the challenges that this city faces and to bring about solutions that will improve the quality of all residents. In the past few years, I have witnessed my husband work late nights on his time off, weekends and holidays, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, all the time. He's driven by a sense of duty to make Coachella a better place for all of us. He listens to everyone, whether it's a concerned citizen, a colleague or a community leader, Gabriel is always the first to respond to offer help and support. He does not view his role as simply a job. He does not view his role as simply a job. It is his mission to serve with compassion, understanding and fairness. To create nourishment foster relationships, which he has done. The changes he's made in this city are visible. Today I ask you, members of the city council, to look around, to consider the profound impact your decision will make on our city's future and on the future of families like ours. If action is taken that disrupts the stability and progress that Gabriel has worked so hard to establish, it will not only hinder Coachella's potential and progress, but also cause unnecessary hardships for the families who have placed their trust in him, including ours. I urge you to approach the decision with empathy, reason and truth as I speak to you today, not just as a wife, but as a mother, as a resident of this city and most importantly, as a human being. Our family's future, our children's future, the future of this city are all in your hands. Before I conclude, know that the heart of our community is not buildings or budgets, but in the people. People like Gabriel, who are dedicated to making Coachella a place where families can thrive. Please make the decision that will allow our beautiful city to continue moving forward with strength, unity and hope. And to you, Gabe, our current city manager, we love you and are so proud of all your accomplishments, what you've done, what you're doing and what you've yet to come to do. I love you.
I love you and I'm really proud of you. I love you.
Because we are Coachella. Next up, we have Jason Hernandez.
Honorable Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the city council, I am your current chairman of your planning commission. And if you ever wondered what community looks like, just go ahead and look around. You got a packed house in support of your city manager and not only your city manager, but your city attorney. I, I get the luxury of sitting on a dais. And perhaps my appointment was met with much controversy, but we, over the last two years, have worked tirelessly to move Coachella forward and bring innovative solutions and ideas. I've worked with Dr. Martin and Attorney Campos. And I will tell you that the working relationships that we've carried have been to the nines. And not only take my word for it, but take everybody else's word for it, who's been advocating on their behalf this morning. Although it may be inconvenient to be here, look at everybody that showed up. And so that ought to send a message that the confidence that they have in him and in him. Although that confidence might not be there for you because everybody is here questioning you this morning. Why is it that this meeting is scheduled at this time? Or why now? And what's next? You have people that just entered or entering your city, potentially being annexed in flux that had the opportunity to go to where? India? And they chose what? Coachella. Why? Because of stability, because of the promise. And right now they're questioning that move. Why? Because of instability. Homes that are successful, people that are successful come with stability. So what you're doing today, you're not an agent of change. You're an agent of chaos, causing disruption to your city. And that's not coming from me. That's coming from them who are questioning your moves, your motives this morning. So my question to you is where does this stop? We know where it starts because it started today. But where does it stop? It's going to cost the city hundreds of thousands of dollars. Perhaps put projects on pause, cause millions of dollars and bond money loss. And so you got to ask yourself, what's your vision for Coachella? Obviously, your vision and the vision of these people is not a shared vision. It's not the same vision. For that, I have no confidence vote in this present city council. And I urge the city and its constituents for recall election on Delgado, on Figueroa and even you, Ms. Perez. Because we cannot, we cannot put in jeopardy. We cannot have you jeopardize the future of Coachella. For 20 years, it took 20 years to build Coachella to what it is today. And we cannot afford to go back. God bless you.
Thank you. Next, next up, we have Josie Gonzalez. And following that, we have Jose Comité Latino. Jose Comité Latino. I apologize, no, no, me de lae.
Good morning, council. I'm Josie Gonzalez, a resident of Coachella and a prior member of this council. I'm compelled to provide comments on council member Figueroa, Perez and Delgado's choice to fire our city manager, Dr. Gabriel Martin. As a council member, I had the responsibility of hiring a city manager following the retirement of Bill Patterson. Dr. Martin was chosen as a city manager based on his experience, his leadership and his proven dedication to the city of Coachella. I have two simple points to make. The first point is why? Why is this happening? Of what value is this to the community of Coachella? To remove the leader of the city staff when the obvious consequence is disruption in the flow of the city's number one priority, which is to meet the needs of the residents? Whose benefit is it to fire Dr. Martin? Not the residents. Not the residents. That's clear. All you got to do is look around. Look at the progress. Again, the question is why? Why, Ms. Perez? Why, Ms. Delgado? Dr. Figueroa, the least you can do is look up and stare at the person that's talking to you, doctor. I would imagine you understand that. So why? It's clear. It's pretty clear why. There's no basis for such a drastic move. There's no basis for such a drastic move. It has been proven by the three council members cheering, spearheading this move to create chaos. That's the only consequence, is to stop the lack of progress and create chaos. Why? Why? My second point is more the human aspect because that's what I'm all about. I'm a social worker at heart. Why? The human aspect. I really understand the politics. It's clear why. It's 10 o'clock in the morning. It was initially at six. Now it's 10. We know why. Just needed to make the point. Second point again is the human aspect. Dr. Martin has done an outstanding job as our city manager. All you got to do is look around, like I said earlier. That's not even in dispute. That's not in dispute, Dr. Figueroa, Denise, Ms. Perez. That's not in dispute. And the evidence is clear. You guys haven't given us a reason. Just decided on a win a week after coming back from vacation. Just decided. Let's call a meeting at 10:00 in the morning and let's fire the city manager and let's fire our, our council. Dr. Martin is the first city manager, if not in a long time, to live in the city of Coachella. He pays his taxes to the city of Coachella. He shops in Coachella. His children go to school in Coachella. Again, showing his, showing his commitment to the community, not talking about it, but showing it. Disrupting the lives of his family, in particular his children, for no given reason, no given reason. None. Just because you can? Because you can? Is wrong. Absolutely wrong. And the community is watching. In closing, I'm appealing to the council's better angels, in particular, Mr. Figueroa, Mrs. Perez and Ms. Delgado. I'm appealing to your better angels, that you reassess the basis for such an action that's going to allow the city to continue and allow the city to continue to prosper and not go backwards and get disrupted in our forward progress. I truly hope, I truly hope, wholeheartedly, that you guys listen to your community. Perhaps some of them voted for you. Perhaps a lot of them have. But if this goes forward and you pursue what you guys are doing without any valid reason, any valid reason, that's shameful, is disrespectful to your community. And there's consequences. There's consequences.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez.
Thank you for your time.
So I just wanted to remind everyone again that we want to be respectful of the three minutes. So I can give you a 30-second reminder and just to ensure that we allow everyone some time so they can get back to work. So next, Jose Comité Latino.
Buenos dias.
Buenos dias.
Spanish, because the Comité Latino is in the Bay of Coachella. The first question for the state of Coachella. The motive, the reason why they change? They're in for the 10:00 in the morning. If all of our people are working, what are they hiding? That the community doesn't know. Please, they're for the people. Don't put them on that table. Remember, remember, Denise, remember who the people deserve. We deserve respect. All of Coachella deserves respect. You, Señor Figueroa, remember in that chair. They put the people, they deserve respect. They want to change the man, but they're not. Coachella is an excellence. All the people that pass through the Bay of Coachella. They say, "How beautiful is Coachella." Thank you to Coachella, thank you to Señor Graviel. How will they change this if there are projects ahead? Millions of dollars that are for Coachella. Not just for their interests, for their interests. You guys, we want Coachella, the people. If it's your interest, you guys, say it openly, openly, say it. Not just you guys. You, Señor Lopez. We said clearly when he elected, do it for the people. The people need good people in that chair. Not just to occupy the chair for the people. Look at what they're doing. Respect the decision of Señor Graviel. Respect Señor Esteban Andres Mayor. Not just because, "Yes, we do." Learn, Coachella, Coachella. All the children of the schools, all the parks, all the streets, excellent. Because he has the feet on the ground, 100%. He's worked with all the people of Coachella. Teach them, and the captain, too. Not just the people, we'll continue to fight so that the united people never lose. Yes or no? The people, we will never lose. If they lose, if they lose, if they lose, if they lose. Thank you.
Gracias. Rosalio Ávila. Following Rosalio Ávila is Israel Morales.
Good morning, guys. I wasn't prepared for this, but I see these guys could see my name is Rosalio Ávila, boss of Bychuk, the Parks and Commissioner Chairman. But if you guys see, I've never seen this much people here for support for someone. I mean, I've dealt with him a couple of times. Anytime I have any questions, he answers me right away. You know, he's been a great asset to the city. I've been in the city since 2000. I have a business here since 2011 and I could tell you, people love to come to Coachella now. And this, our streets are getting fixed, the parks. I mean, I've been there, the parks are wrecked for three years now. And you know, the improvements are great. I mean, I spoke with many of you before about these projects with him. And there's always a clear answer to help us out and make Coachella better. And at the same time, I'm, look at that. I mean, in three years, I've never really seen this packed house, this much people helping a guy. And I mean, and we've been in critical meetings and it still wasn't this. Maybe a little bit of here and that's it. So this explains a lot what the city wants, the people want, what we want. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
There's also 81 people on Zoom, too. So let's also remember that.
And the ranchers noted that there was 80-plus ranchers. Oh, next up, we have Israel Morales. And following Israel Morales, we have Jaime Barajas.
Hi, good morning. It's an honor to speak to you all today. My name is Israel Morales and I'm a resident here in the Coachella Valley who's seen improvement in our cities. The decision that's being made worries me. Those who've worked to build and work on our projects may be affected, whether it be slower development time or a halt in its entirety. As an individual, it makes me wonder why these decisions are being made in the first place? Why the sudden shakeup and what result will the decision lead to? If an individual loses their position, what effect will that have on the development in our city? The morale for the employees of our city? They will have to reaccustom themselves to a new system, the new person who will bring something different to the table. And how long will that process take? Will it result in a severance pay? And how, how will we as a city have to deal with that financial burden? The decision that can affect our, the city, the decision that can affect the future of our city should not be held knowing that the voice of the people may not be heard. We deserve to understand why and how this decision is being made for the future of the Coachella Valley. And if, if it is not beneficial, then why is it being made? I thank you all for being here today.
Thank you. Thank you. Next up, we have Jaime Barajas. Following Jaime Barajas, we have Joey Acuña Jr.
Buenos dias. My name is Jaime Barajas. And we're going to support and also question a simple question. What is the reason why they want to make this change? The people want to know this. They don't want it to stay hidden, just because of the lies of certain people. Do what they want. What they want. The people, don't ignore them because the people who put them. Give them that privilege because we're here. Do you want the people or do you want interests? What do they want? We want clear accounts, that they say what they need to know. That they pay what they have to pay. Not just lies of certain people. Don't ignore them, those who put them. Don't squeeze their hand on those who are hungry.
Gracias. Joey, Joey Acuña Jr. And next up would be Marta Ariola.
Good morning, everyone, Mr. Mayor, council members. So it begins, I guess, this is how it's going to start. Hopefully, this is not how it ends. As a lifelong resident, taxpayer and voter, I'd say that to remind you who you're supposed to represent. I'm very disappointed, but not surprised. You know, this, this, we all knew this was coming, just a matter of time. I can sit here and tell you all the great things that Dr. Martin and the staff and the team here in Coachella has done, but you are but you already know that. And you know why I know that? Because all of you sent me campaign materials that said how great the city was doing, how great we've had housing, you know, all of this. And we did it. You all told me. Dr. Figueroa, I saw you in an interview under your tenure, two years. You had done all these great things. Most of that stuff started long before you were here. But okay, you're on the council, you can take credit. But I know that you, or any of you, didn't personally go do all the work that the staff did, under the guidance of Dr. Martin. That's how I know this is a bunch of crap, okay? Dr. Martin, Mr. Campos, the staff that's here, everybody who works, this isn't about you. You know, and while it feels like it, it isn't about you. This is about power, this is about control, this is about promises to the special interest groups that funded their campaigns. And you know how I know that? Because that same group that supported them spent millions of dollars at the College of the Desert. What's the first thing they did? They put their president on leave. They're spending thousands and thousands of dollars on the school board races. What are those candidates saying? When we get elected, all these people are going to get fired. It's the same thing. And all those special interest groups are not from Coachella. Don't give a crap about Coachella. They're all from the East Valley. But you had one developer spend over three quarters of a million dollars on the community college. Then he started spending forty thousand, got his other friends to put another forty thousand into the city district race. This is about the future and who controls it. They want control, and we have at least two people here who are aligned with them. Councilmember Pérez, congratulations. I don't know you, but we'll see. Your first vote, major vote here is going to be an interesting one. Unfortunately, it will define you probably for the rest of your four years. I hope you remember what you sent me, saying that you wanted to represent the residents. And we don't always have to agree. Heck, I don't agree with the mayor half the time. We have our differences. But at the end of the day, I need to feel at least, again, as a resident here, that you guys are doing it in the best interests of the city. And if it's different than what I believe, so be it. I can live with that, but that's not happening here. And let's just be clear, this isn't about you, Dr. Martin, who's done a great job, Mr. Campos, or the staff out here who's done a great job over the years. Been here a long time. The city's moving, and again, how do I know? You guys told me. You guys told me that everybody was doing a great job, but here we are. So thank you very much, and we'll see.
Thank you. Marta Ariola. And following Marta Ariola, we have Steve Garcia.
My name is Marta Ariola. I'm a first grade teacher at Coral Mountain Academy.
Can you speak into the mic, please?
Okay, I'm here representing, I have a letter from some of the staff. I'm sorry, I late notice. We didn't know that it had moved until six, I mean, today in the morning, we thought that it was going to be at six. So my friends, my colleagues, they did a letter to whom it made concern, and I didn't have time to get all the signatures. But this is what the staff at Coral Mountain is saying. We, the staff of Coral Mountain Academy, are writing on behalf of Mr. Gabriel Martin. We have known Mr. or Dr. Martin for five, probably four or five years. His children, Gally, and Gio, attend our school. He has always been very respectful, well-liked, and reliable parent at school. He has been represented, he has been present and supportive of his children and staff. He's personable, he's personable and present, attending all events and gaining to know the people to work at school. In addition, we are aware of the positive changes happening throughout the Coachella, the city of Coachella. Dr. Martin has been a significant part of these changes as his city manager position has a role in his major decisions. We support and believe Dr. Martin has been a positive role model for our community. And like I said, we didn't have enough time, and we had to do it early in the morning. And I'm here, you know, supporting Dr. Martin. Besides being a council, I mean, I'm sorry, I'm nervous. I'm not the best spokesperson or the best speaker. But I know, I know him because I had Gally in my class, and every day in the morning, he comes, drops the kids off, comes to work, even on Fridays, is like, is this your day off? Because I know how the system works. He's like, yes, but I have to go and do work. Again, he's a workaholic, believe me. He will just run from here and there, and he's a very active parent in our school. He chose for every, every event that we have, he supports, he donates. I mean, he goes above and beyond as a parent. We're very pleased to have their kids like some of, somebody you mentioned. You know, most of us working or living here in Coachella, where do we send our kids? To school? This sense. Because why? Because Coachella is not a good place, because the district is not a good place, the school district. But see, you are products of Coachella, of the district, Coachella Valley District, and here just living.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm, when I heard the news, I'm sorry, that he was leaving. Let's make Coachella a place like Cancun, you know, where everybody wants to come and visit and stay here. Not Cancun, like the meaning. Cancun, the meaning is the nest of snakes.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Next, next up, we have Steve Garcia. Following Steve Garcia, we have Jennifer Duran.
Morning, everyone. Good morning, council members. Just a little product placement there. Good morning, council members. Thank you for all of your service, for what all of you do. I'm here to support my friend Gabriel here. I'm not really sure why I'm here. I know I'm here to support him because I know what wants to take place, and I want to do my part in making sure that I do have some involvement in that, along with the other, the true city of Coachella that's here. So just real quick, I want to share a story with, and I am Steve, I run Six Street Coffee. I'm also a resident here for the past fifteen years. So I am from Coachella. I am from Coachella. About six years ago, seven years ago, actually, I met Mayor Steve Hernandez, where I used to work. I served his table. He was telling me about some plans that, what the city wanted to do with the new library, and that was open up a coffee shop. And he asked me, if you know anybody, let me know, so they could shoot over a business plan. And I'm like, man, you're looking at the guy. I want to do that. And so he shot me over Gabe Martin's email. And I remember he, I emailed him that same day, my business plan, and probably less than a couple of hours later, he emailed me back. I was picking up my kids from Cesar Chavez Elementary School, and I was, when I got that email from you, man, I was like, really stoked. So ever since then, Gabe Martin has really been a part of what Six Street Coffee is today. I always say that Six Street Coffee doesn't belong to one man or a partnership, but it belongs to the city. It belongs to the community. And sir, you have had, I thank you for that, and I thank you all for supporting us. I remember Gabe Martin spoke in front of the city council, it was a different city council at that time, for me here. And I remember Frank, there was our, I joke with him and say that he was our first customer for Six Street Coffee, because we serve coffee here for all the council members and everyone who was in attendance that day. But it was because of Gabe Martin that, that I was able to open. And you have a resident who had a dream, and it's because of El Pueblo that made that happen. So thank you. And I ask who's ever, you know, trying to see his way out, reconsider. The city of Coachella is growing, and it's growing in the right direction. We have this saying with a, with a community thing that we have going on, which is called Just Move Coachella, and that's moving forward in the right direction together. And over the past couple of years, and three, maybe three, four years, we have been moving in the right direction together. So I ask you all to reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Jennifer Duran, and following Jennifer Duran is Natalia Gonzalez.
Good morning, mayor and city council. As a lifelong resident of the city of Coachella, I have seen more progress than any of our surrounding cities. We've brought home millions of state dollars in the last four years, which speaks volumes. I find it unfair that the decision to terminate the city manager's contract has been brought to the table, considering all of the wonderful projects that have blossomed in this city. As a college student at Cal Poly Pomona and alumni of schools in the city, I look up to Dr. Martin, and I hope to one day fill those shoes once my time comes. I want to plead with the members who are voting to terminate to think of your public and the disservice you'll be doing to us as a whole. As a young professional, my only hope is that you come to your senses and reevaluate your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Natalia Gonzalez. Following Natalia Gonzalez, we have Amalia Deatsland.
Good morning, mayor, city council, and city staff. I want to take a few moments to share my concerns regarding today's agenda item. You often love to throw around the word transparency, but where's the transparency today when you schedule a meeting at ten AM? Let me remind you that this city, the people that voted you into office, is a working-class community. It is a privilege for those of us in this room to be here, having taken time away from work. Not everyone has that luxury. Not everyone has paid time off. I guarantee you, if this meeting was scheduled for five o'clock, there would have been more people here. And so the fact that I'm able to stand here is a privilege, the fact that everyone in this room has been able to give public comments, the fact that you all on the diets are sitting here is a privilege. And how dare you schedule a meeting for this community at ten AM, knowing this community that you serve? Now let's talk about the issue at hand, the termination of the city manager without cause. Transparency would often mean that you are giving the community full explanation for such a significant decision. Yet here we are, with no justification or reasoning for removing the individual responsible for leading this city. How can you, as elected officials, justify this decision to fire someone without cause? How can you morally stand there and sit here and listen to folks without giving explanation or clear communication? Let's not, let's not forget the ripple effect of this decision that you will have on the staff that operates the city. You all love to brag about the city wins and the things, the good things that are happening in this community, but let me also remind you that it is the staff who does the work. It is the staff who works tirelessly every single day to make the wins that you all get to brag about on social media, that you get to put on campaign literature. Those are the wins of the staff. Those are the wins of Mr. Gabriel, Dr. Martin. Under the city, and under the city manager's leadership, Coachella has seen the most amount of grant funding that it has ever seen in its history. These funds are vital to keeping projects, programs, and essential services moving forward for the benefits of our residents. Removing the city manager, the person who has helped secure these resources, the person who has given the city these wins, without cause is wrong. So now, I'm just going to end my closing remarks. This is not what fairness or accountability looks like. Scheduling a meeting in a way that excludes the community from participating is not what leadership looks like. I urge you to take a step back and consider the message you are sending, not just to staff, but to the entire community and those that are in this room. I ask you to act with integrity and kindness. And I also want to just mention that anyone that has been fortunate enough to get to know this man, Dr. Gabriel Martin, you know that he is a good man. And there's a good saying that says that good leaders are good people. And I can say with full confidence, Dr. Gabriel Martin is a good man and the best city manager this city has ever seen.
Thank you, Natalia. Next up, Amalia Deatsland.
Muchas de las cosas que se han dicho hoy se han dicho en inglés. Yo lo que quiero es hablar con la comunidad mexicana y no la comunidad latina. Tenemos la historia. Ya voy a cumplir setenta y cinco años, y fui la primera presidenta del comité de huelga a la edad de diecisiete años. Hemos estado peleando discriminación, los derechos de nuestra comunidad por años y años y años. Ha sido un trabajo difícil en muchas ocasiones. Pero cuando Carlos Campos empezó su carrera, estaba limpiando las oficinas con su papá, las oficinas de Coachella. La educación que ellos trajeron, la representación y el movimiento que se hizo para tratar de educar a nuestra comunidad fue grande. Y aún sin embargo, hoy vemos que este grupo que fue elegido por el pueblo lo sacó en una forma sin pensar que él ha sido un honor para nuestra comunidad, que es un ejemplo de lo que queremos hacer para nuestra juventud, de que se eduquen y regresen a nuestra comunidad a servir. Esto es un ataque a nuestro pueblo y es una falta de respeto. Yo vengo de cuando nos estaban echando, nos estaban fumigando en los parques aquí con gas y dolores huertas, y muchos de los trabajadores tuvimos que correr para escapar ese gas. Vengo del tiempo donde hemos visto tanto que se ha pasado nuestras comunidades. Para ver esta, lo que está pasando aquí es una vergüenza. Es una vergüenza que no entiendan la historia, que no entiendan el progreso de nuestro pueblo. Y ahora que estamos haciendo mejor, yo he traído, traje una escuela con setecientos cincuenta alumnos ahora. Estoy ayudando a un grupo de programas que han estado surgiendo en nuestra comunidad. Pero veo de que cuando el alcalde de la ciudad estaba tratando de defender que se hiciera un colegio aquí, dos miembros de este consilio se estaban retratando con aquella persona que estaba impidiendo que se trajera ese proyecto aquí. Qué vergüenza. Ahora tienen la oportunidad de traer el progreso en nuestra comunidad. He traído personas que vienen a invertir dinero en la ciudad. Hemos viendo el progreso que el city manager está haciendo en nuestra comunidad y ver de que sin ningún motivo tratan del poder. Sabemos, Dr. Figueroa, sabemos de mí, ¿qué les da el dinero a ustedes para que hagan estas movidas? Ya lo sabemos. Pero le estoy pidiendo al pueblo que no permitimos, debemos de permitir lo que está pasando aquí. Hay que hablar y hay que proteger el futuro de nuestra comunidad. Gracias.
Gracias. Marnie Navarro. Marnie Navarro. Following Marnie is Oscar Ponseca.
Is that okay? Morning, everyone. Council, mayor, thank you for creating this moment to be able to give public comment. I have had the privilege of working with Dr. Martin over the years in my role as executive director of Raices Cultura. It's right here, a little nonprofit, doing great work in the city, thanks to It's right here, a little nonprofit, doing great work in the city, thanks to the collaborative spirit with Dr. Martin, city staff, and council. In my experience, Dr. Martin holds his position at the city of Coachella in the highest regard with a leadership style of fairness, equity, and a devotion to service. It is a rare thing to see an accomplished leader like Dr. Martin also maintain an open-door policy with a willingness to listen to anyone, be it a resident, business owner, youth, or community partner like myself. Whether we have cause for concerns or ideas of innovation, Dr. Martin's door is always open. His commitment to progress and inclusivity, as well as his professionalism, intelligence, kindness, those are qualities that any employer should be proud of, giving praise and recognition for success after success, not terminating him immediately after the holiday season, after an election period with no apparent cause given to the public whatsoever. I'm quite shocked, actually, at the proposal to terminate Dr. Martin. It gives me pause to think that this council, one that I have worked closely with as a community leader, that you would operate in such an uncalled-for way against a staff who has done nothing but good for the community. It creates great concern in my mind about the intentions of whoever has proposed this sudden and unfair act. If this is allowed to happen to exemplary staff like Dr. Martin, what city staff positions are safe from future acts of retribution, punishment, or outright firing simply because a future leader simply feels like it? I deeply, deeply implore this esteemed council to reconsider the proposal of removing Dr. Martin from his position. Thank you.
Thank you. Oscar Fonseca. Following Oscar Fonseca is Agustín Ariola.
Buenos días. Good morning. My name is Oscar Fonseca, and I can't say with with full force that I'm a, I'm a resident 100% of Coachella. I got married with a resident of Coachella. And we moved to Tierra del Sol 13 years ago. And I became a father in 2020. Becoming a father, as those of you who have had the blessing of being a father, does change who you are. For those of you who might know me before, I'm not the same person that I am today because I'm a father. Carlos Campos and Dr. Gabriel Martin have taught me so much, not just of being a father, but being a true leader. I know the majority of you in that dais. And I've had personal conversations with many of you. Ms. Perez, Councilwoman, I do not have the pleasure of knowing you, but hopefully one day we can have a conversation. One of the things that has, has made me successful in this community as a leader is that I've been open to listen to both sides of the conversation. I am a leader. I am a leader because I do not take my own personal biases into decisions. I am a leader because I listen to the town that I live with, and I choose to raise my children in this valley. I choose for my children to go to CBUSD schools. Many of the people that are accomplished like myself do not make the choice to leave their children in our local school district. But I do. Why? Because I'm an involved father. Why? Because I'm an actual leader. And why? Because I care deeply about this community. About a year and a half ago, I had the pleasure of being selected to be part of the planning commission. With individuals with that planning commission forward, I can honestly say that this commission that I've been involved with the last year and a half has done amazing work in moving the agenda forward for us to have a better community. And none of that would have happened without the staff. None of that would have happened without the work of the community. But more importantly, none of that would have happened without the consistency of the work that we all want to do. I want you to please reconsider this decision, not only because all of you are great leaders also, but because you're doing this to someone that doesn't deserve this decision. Please reconsider. Everybody here has authority of making those decisions, but I want you to know that I am a Coachelano, through and through, because I care about this community. I thank you for your time, and I'll be watching you because, as many of you know, and those know, I also have a rolodex, and I also know a lot of people and people that can truly make decisions. This is not a threat, but what this really is, is our community wants what we were going towards, and we want change. Muchas gracias.
Next up, we have Agustín Ariola, and following Agustín is Vanessa Sanchez Mesa.
Good morning, Gabe, Carlos, Mayor and Council. My name is Agustín Ariola. I'm a resident of Coachella. I have been a resident for the past three years. And I want to acknowledge that we still have a full house, almost two hours into public comment on a Tuesday morning at 10:00 AM. I had to take time off of work to come and do this because I deeply care about those individuals. And I think the choice is clear, right? People make mistakes. Luckily, I think you're at a point where you can rescind, you can retract your decision and make sure that this never happens again. You've heard today that everybody that's shown up has had nothing but good things to say about both Gabriel and Campos. It is astonishing, as a young person, to see the amount of involvement that this community has when we truly care. When we truly care, we come out, we show up, no matter what. And that's what you're seeing today. So I'm gonna keep it short because everybody has covered everything that I could possibly say and more about Gabriel and Campos. But I hope that, again, you consider this decision, reconsider this decision, and make the right choice because our pueblo has spoken. Thank you.
This is Vanessa Sanchez Mesa, and following Vanessa, we have Bethany Aguilar.
Good morning, Mayor and council members. My name is Vanessa. I've been an intern with the city for the past half year. It felt wrong not to come up today to speak and vouch for Dr. Martin. He's been such a great boss to us all. City staff, interns, and temps can vouch on that. He's volunteered time after work with community cleanups and volunteering time with our resident academy. He attended every meeting. He helped with any questions and guided residents with help as well on their own time. And it's a great honor to have someone like Dr. Martin and to meet someone like him in your lifetime. He's very motivating. He motivates us to keep pushing in City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Bethany Aguilar. And following Bethany, we have Matthew Rickert.
Good morning, Mayor and council members. My name is Bethany Aguilar. I'm a graduate student. Right now, I'm working as a student intern under Dr. Martin. And I've been working with him for about six months, and it has been astonishing to know how the city works, right? I didn't really know anything about it. But one key factor and key pillar is Dr. Martin. He has been, sometimes I schedule his Zoom meetings, and it's like a puzzle trying to find any little bit of space for different projects and different organizations because they want to talk with him directly. And he always says yes. He does have an open-door policy. The only times it's closed is when he's in a meeting with somebody. And then it opens right back up. Any resident, any worker at the staff or at the city can go and talk to him. And I really appreciate all of his knowledge and his wisdom that he gives to a lot of the interns and a lot of the staff workers. He calls everyone by name. He's always smiling, and he remembers conversations above everything that he does for the city. It takes three of you to say no, you know, to vote him out or fire him. And those three people are going against Dr. Martin, but it's also going against the residents, the residents who are not able to be here today at 10:00 AM, the residents who are on Zoom, the organizations. Everything that he has done is going against all the work and the progress. And it also hasn't just been him, right? But under his leadership and direction, the city has moved forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Matthew Rickert, and then...
Good morning. I'm a local business owner and employ over 100 people in this community. And I think it's a little disrespectful that this is what we're discussing today. I really think that you guys should be worried about the constituents. The city has grown tremendously over the last few years, and we want to see it continue to grow. So please get back to worrying about your constituents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Myra Perez, our treasurer.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to be up here, and thank you for everyone that's voiced their comments and concerns regarding this matter with Dr. Martin. I am Myra Perez. I am the newly-elected city treasurer for the city of Coachella. I am deeply disheartened by the swift decision to dismiss not only the city manager Gabriel Martin, but city attorney Carlos Campos from their active roles. I stepped into this position with enthusiasm and a genuine desire to contribute meaningfully to the city I call home. However, this decision has raised significant concerns. As a resident, I have witnessed the remarkable growth and momentum our city has experienced under their leadership. Their guidance has played a critical role in shaping the progress Coachella has achieved, and their removal feels abrupt and unsettling. I'm a business owner. I am particularly concerned about how this decision was made, the consequences it will bring, and ultimately, who it will benefit. In business, you would never make such a drastic change without having a plan in place, a qualified replacement, a structured timeline, and a thorough understanding of the potential impacts. The decision to remove key leadership positions without visible preparation undermines morale. It disrupts process, and it jeopardizes the progress we've worked so hard to achieve. I strongly urge the council to reconsider, or at the very least, provide the community with a clear and compelling explanation for this decision. Transparency and thoughtfulness deliberation are essential in maintaining the trust of the residents and ensuring that all actions are taken with the best interest of our community in mind. And with that, I just want to remind everybody that having a meeting on a Tuesday at 10:00 AM, I am a business owner, and you cannot believe how many calls and emails I am falling behind on running my own business to be here, but this is very, very important. So I stress the fact that we gotta do better. We gotta be better for the community. We have to make these meetings accessible, so that people can come and raise their opinions. It is very important. We're trying to, my business is named Integrity Insurance. It stands for integrity. We gotta be transparent, and we gotta give the community that opportunity to voice their concerns because that is why they elected us. Thank you.
I'm just gonna follow up with some of the, some of the speaker forms that did not respond earlier. Ana Alvarado and Juan Alvarado Senior. Did Juan Alvarado Senior make it? No? Okay. Ana Alvarado. And I'm sure we still have comments on Zoom, correct?
We currently have 127 people participating in Zoom.
Wow. Okay. So...
I want to hear from them, too.
Yeah, I want to encourage them to raise their hand. But as the city clerk, you know, I'd be remiss if I did not make a comment, especially with all the issues that have been raised about transparency. So I'm gonna go ahead and make my comment, and we can move on to Zoom. So as the city clerk, I am committed to upholding transparency, compliance, and public trust in our government process. Given the significance of evaluating or potentially terminating the city manager, it is critical that the council ensures all measures are taken to inform and involve the public in accordance with the Brown Act. I would like to highlight that we serve a working-class community where a 24-hour notice for a special meeting held on a weekday morning may not provide an adequate opportunity for community members to participate, as we have heard. Transparency in such significant decisions is essential for maintaining trust and accountability. For transparency, can the council confirm how this agenda item aligns with prior discussions and public notice requirements? It's essential that the public has confidence in the openness of this decision-making process. As the keeper of records, I can confirm that there is a lack of public discussion in past agendas since the last evaluation of Dr. Martin and his renewal of his contract, whereas his next evaluation was not due until May regarding the city manager's performance revaluation. To highlight these inconsistencies, you know, it could suggest insufficient transparency, as has been expressed. In the spirit of open governance, I respectfully raise the following questions for the council's consideration as well. Have all steps been taken to ensure compliance with the Brown Act, including avoiding any appearance of private decision-making or serial communications among council members? Moving forward, can the council commit to ensuring that any discussions of this nature are first included as an open agenda item to foster greater transparency and public confidence? I also recommend that the council consider adopting a policy requiring significant decisions, such as the evaluation or, in this case, termination of a city manager, to first be discussed as an open agenda item before any closed-session action is taken. This approach ensures the public is aware of these discussions in advance with sufficient notice. Additionally, hosting public workshops or forums on matters of significant importance would demonstrate a commitment of inclusivity and open government, reinforcing the city's dedication to accountability and transparency that we so much promised our community. My recommendation again is that the decisions of this magnitude be handled with the highest level of openness and adherence to legal requirements. Public trust in our governance depends on these practices, and I encourage the council to prioritize transparency to strengthen that trust. Thank you. En español solamente les quiero dar un summary, ¿verdad?, de lo que dije. Yo quería hablar como secretaria municipal de la importancia de ser transparente en nuestra comunidad. Y yo sé que muchos tienen ahorita los oídos, pero solamente quería aclarar eso como tenemos aquí el noticiero, y no todos aquí tienen ese oído. We move forward with those comments that we have on Zoom. If you can please raise your hand on Zoom, and we can call you up and unmute you.
Mario Unrealis, please go ahead and comment.
Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you, Mario.
Thank you for your time. I received an email this morning regarding this matter with Dr. Gabriel Martin. I'm with BR Horton. We happen to be the larger developer nationwide. We started working with Dr. Martin about seven years ago, six, seven years ago, when he was the economic director. He has been instrumental in us going into the city of Coachella and being able to purchase land and build new communities. We built the Prado Community, Escondida Point, Dol Fina, and other ones. And currently, we are in communications with Dr. Martin because of his initiative and his business skills and the relationship that he has built with us. We're looking at potentially purchasing three new sites to build three new communities in the city of Coachella that would total approximately 690 new homes. He's been instrumental in everything that we've done, everything. He's been the key person. I don't think if Dr. Martin was there, I don't think we would be in the seat of Coachella right now. BR Horton is standing up for Dr. Martin to continue the seat of Coachella. If there are changes, we may reconsider looking somewhere else, especially in those three new communities. Now picture this. 690 homes. You're basically bringing 690 new residents. Taxes, revenue. More people purchasing in your grocery stores and your businesses in Coachella. You're talking about millions of dollars. And if you're making a decision like this, based on what I hear, sounds like a political move and not necessarily... sounds like a political move and not necessarily the job that Dr. Martin has done with the city. This is huge, and it's going to impact the city. I received an email from another developer, meaning that we're not the only developer that is supporting Dr. Martin. We also have Pulte, Leonard, and other. This is a very small community, and I got an email this morning, and I got on the phone, and I could tell you right now that we heard a lot of displeasure about this decision. So I would ask you to really reconsider, because this is something that is going to impact the seat of Coachella in the long term. Thank you so much. Take care.
I see we have more hands raised, so if you could just.
Josh D., go ahead.
What was that name again?
Josh D., are you there? Going to go to the next. Jonathan Bayton, go ahead. Jonathan Bayton, go ahead. Go ahead.
Hi, good morning, council members and Mr. Mayor. Earlier, a committee member said, "If it's not broken, don't fix it." How can things not be broken when Mayor Hernandez appointed his own brother, Jason Hernandez, to the planning commission, a body tasked with overseeing and approving local developments that shape the future of the community? How could a mayor take this away from his own residents? Aren't there laws against this? This is similar to insider trading. Isn't this corruption? I think it is. Where is the transparency? Everyone here, did you guys know this? Think about it. There's something not right. Also, Gabriel Martin and Mayor Hernandez were college buddies. Something is not right. Where there's smoke, there is fire. Behind the doors, there are questions to be answered, and this is why we have council members that make hard decisions. Let them do their job. Thank you.
And just for clarity, what was that name again?
Jonathan Bayton.
Jonathan Bayton, thank you.
Dagney Smith, go ahead. Dagney Smith, go ahead. Moving on to the next. Javier. Go ahead. Javier, go ahead. Moving on to the next. T. Prado, go ahead. T. Prado, go ahead. Moving on to the next. Carissa Carrera, go ahead.
Good morning. Thank you. Carissa Carrera, I am currently president of the Coachella Valley Teachers Association. And while I am not a resident of Coachella, I have worked in the city and the district around there for over 20 years. And I would think since my father-in-law was born on First Street in a home there, that that would also make me a resident of Coachella, as other people have said. So with that information and hearing what everybody's saying and seeing who the speakers are, it's very interesting to me because Coachella Valley Unified tends to have their public meetings at 10:00 p.m. and 11:00 p.m. and they have fired Dr. Esparsa, while she's been in charge, has fired 29 people or put them in lower positions, demoted them, and nobody is speaking up about any of that. And it leads me to believe, as others have said against this vote, that it's a political move. It's very clearly a political move to have all of these people out here speaking on behalf of these two people who they are planning on dismissing. Everybody knows that you cannot publicly share personnel information. And so for everybody to sit there and say that they don't know why they are wanting to dismiss them, they are not legally allowed to share that information. So you're not going to know why, but you have to assume that these newly elected members were elected for a reason because the city of Coachella has spoken, and they have spoken saying that they want change in Coachella. And that is what is taking place today. So I am speaking on behalf of supporting the council's decision. If that's what the majority decides, I'm going to go with the assumption that there are reasons because you have to have reasons to fire somebody. You just can't share them publicly. So with that information and looking to see, we have school board members, a school board superintendent, even a teacher who is claiming to speak on behalf of an entire school site that admitted that she did not have the signatures from those people. It's a little concerning just to see who is out speaking on behalf of this. It seems more like people fighting to keep what they've had for years and scared of what they might lose with significant change. Thank you.
Rosa, go ahead.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, sorry. Okay. Good afternoon, city council members. My name is Rosa Bohadia, and I'm here to express my strong support for Dr. Martin. As an early childhood education provider and as a president of a network of over 75 Spanish-speaking in-home providers, I have experienced firsthand the challenges our sector has faced in recent years. During these difficult times, Dr. Martin has been an invaluable ally and advocate for ECE providers, ensuring that our critical work could continue when our communities needed us the most. Under Dr. Martin's leadership, we've seen tangible support for ECE programs, whether through resources. He funded a CARES program funding, collaboration, or simply understanding the vital role we play in the community. Their dedication to our sector has been a lifeline, and I firmly believe that their continued leadership is essential for the stability and growth of our community. Firing Dr. Martin would be a step backwards for the progress we've made together. I urge you to consider the immense positive impact they've had on ECE providers and countless other stakeholders. Their commitment to public service and their ability to navigate challenges with compassion and clarity make them an asset we cannot afford to lose. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Stephen, go ahead.
Hello, council. My name is Stephen Hernandez. I'm a proud resident of Coachella for the last 14 years. I don't know Mr. Martin personally, but being, you know, born and raised in the valley, I grew up in Thermal. And, you know, a comparison of the two, you know, I wish Thermal would have the progression I've seen in Coachella that they've had for the last 14 years. You know, we still have one store in Thermal, and that's the one we have. And just, you know, being, you know, like I said, fairly new to Coachella the last 14 years. You know, I went to CV Unified, graduated from there, and, you know, went to college and came back to the valley as most do. But just the progression they've had there in Coachella, man, I wish Thermal had an ounce of what's going on. And like I said, I've never been into politics, haven't been to any council meetings or anything like that. But I do understand that, you know, Mr. Martin has been a big part of that progression. So, you know, from what I've seen, just, you know, every time I drive through Coachella, where there's, you know, there's something new going up, the streets are being redone. So if he has, you know, a lot to do with that, then, you know, there's nothing, you know, I have nothing bad to say about it. And the last couple, you know, for the last minute, I, you know, the Zoom, for us that are on Zoom since, you know, a nine o'clock meeting isn't, you know, feasible for a lot of people who wanted to attend. I'm a medical professional. I work here in Indio. I cannot take time out. I have to see patients. But luckily, I was able to hop on, you know, hop on Zoom and tune in, tune out. But, you know, for the last minute or so, the camera has been focused on our city council. And, you know, body language says a lot, you know, nonverbal, what you can see. And, you know, I see a few of you are confident in your vote. But I look at, you know, I'm looking to the left of the table. I'm looking to the right, Mr. Figueroa. You know, it's, your body language doesn't say a lot. I, and you've seen the community step up and talk to you right there. You know, eye contact is a lot. I see you just staring down, and it looks like you can't wait for this meeting to be over. But, you know, you've listened to the community, and I have for the last hour or so, and they've spoken. And, you know, I think for a couple of you, your decision is already made, and that is going to change it. But I hope you take into consideration all the pleas and all the, you know, positive stories that have come out of this and, you know, take that into consideration as you make your decision.
Isella, go ahead. Isella, go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good afternoon, council members and mayor. For the past years, the city of Coachella has been booming at its best. The city of Coachella has once again become a city where members gather to enjoy their evenings, making an unconscious decision like terminating the city manager, Dr. Gabriel Martin, will not only jeopardize stability as a city, but it will make us seem weak and divided amongst other cities. As a planning commissioner, I have seen firsthand advancements the city has need under the current leadership. Dr. Martin has contributed to so many of new events that are provided to our community, events that people enjoy and look forward to, without mentioning his contribution to grants and funding to our city. I hope that any decision we need today is made out of professionalism and not immaturity, since immaturity is a characteristic that should not be part of any of Coachella's council members. Councilmember Dr. Figueroa, your capabilities and qualifications are superb for stuff like this. I sure hope you make the right decision for our city. I hope you stand with what you know is right and not with what other council members are imposing on you without any facts or real reason. Councilmember Perez, being puppeteered in order to fit in will not allow you to grow. You have not worked long enough with Coachella staff to have the power to make such vote. People voted you in. Don't disappoint them by allowing other people to think for you. And to make something clear that should be common sense is that Dr. Martin holds a position that he does due to his qualifications and dedication to his career and his long-time life. Thank you.
Michelle, go ahead.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, council, Stephen, mayor. We are all so grateful for, number one, your leadership. And the leadership that I want to thank most of all is Dr. Gabriel Martin for all he's done in his short tenure from healthy initiatives such as trying to become a blue zone. And I was also very proud to be part of the inaugural class of the Coachella Resident Engagement Academy. And I've learned so much about the city that we called home. I've seen parks grow and streets getting fixed, these initiatives taking off. And I truly believe that this city has blossomed under Dr. Martin's beautiful opportunity and community-based mind. I urge the council to reconsider this decision because not only would it set back what we have already accomplished, it will set us back in the future as well because there's inconsistency, and without consistency, there's nothing. I hear a lot of the word transparency, and while I appreciate that, you know, you can't necessarily tell us what's going on, and I respect that. But we, as a community, have come together and knowing that this is a community built on community pride and not the pride of certain individuals who want to change things without talking to the community. So I implore you, I hope you guys understand that I am sitting in my office at work right now because I could not come due to the short notice of this meeting. And I know a few of you personally. You know that I come to you with the biggest heart and the biggest mind, open mind, because I come from the city of La Quinta. And I told this story at the inaugural President Engagement Academy when we were having our graduation. I didn't come from a community. I'm not in my high school yearbook. I didn't feel part of the community when I was in that area. But when I got married and moved to the city of Coachella, it was an amazing change. I saw people like Dr. Gabriel Martin, who is actually my neighbor, will come and watch your house and take care of you. Hey, you know, they don't steal dogs in our neighborhood. They, and it's all because of the staff, the city, and the example that they set. So again, I love our city, and I'm so proud to be a part of it, and I hope that you guys are, too. Thank you.
David, go ahead.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. First of all, I want to urge the council to do what they want to do, not just because all these people are vouching for this guy. That is, obviously, he's supposed to be at work at 7:00 a.m. What time does he drop his kid off? I don't, I doubt it's before 7:00 a.m. He's late to every meeting, okay? Stephanie Virgin works directly with the mayor. How is it possible that she reports to him? Isn't that a conflict of interest? They work all day together, and they serve the city council together. There's tons of nepotism involved with this. That's his college buddy. That's the mayor's college buddy. Okay, that's the reason he's in that position. Okay, all the mayor's friends own businesses, and they receive special treatment. Look who owns all the businesses and is making money. It's so hard to get in touch with anybody from the council, okay? I've called this guy. I've called this guy numerous times, never get a call back. He's never in. He's late to every single meeting. Everybody's, it's all roses, and oh, this guy's great, like the guy doesn't do anything wrong. He does tons of things wrong. The only people that are there for him are the people that are making money with him. And all those people that are being annexed, you've been working for two years to be annexed? I bet you this council can annex you in six months, okay? It's taken you two years, and you're still not annexed, and you're still not part of the community? Why? What's the holdup? That's him not doing his job. I cannot believe that all these people, oh, okay, you know his family. You think he's a nice guy, but you don't know what he works, you don't know how he works. The developer that's there, oh, yeah, we're going to, you're going to change, you're going to take your development because one guy's not working? BS, okay? This is all smoke and mirrors. The guy does not do his job. If he did his job, all those people that were annexed or wanting to be annexed would be there. You know, I believe that you should let the council do their job. They know something we don't, you know? I do know that the mayor and this guy are always at Nix Mesa's bar, and they're not just drinking, they're doing other stuff. So whatever, guys, do your job. Get rid of this clown.
Mr. Garcia, go ahead. Mr. Garcia, go ahead. User with the name CLG, go ahead. User with the name CLG, go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
I would like to express my gratitude for the city council members, Delgado, Perez and Figueroa. I understand that there is an uproar of supporters from the group, from a group that has been in power in our community for years. I ask that you do what you have been elected to do. And that is to make changes, bring change to our community. Do not shy away because there is some pushback. If the majority of the community was happy with their leadership, you would not be there. I am not in favor nor in disagreement with the removal of the current city manager. I am just in favor of change. Thank you.
Agni Smith, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good. Uh, my name is Craig Smith. I'm the Chief Executive Officer of Fountainhead Development. And we have, uh, we're in our nineteenth project in Coachella Valley. Done various projects in Coachella. Um, also have a date ranch down valley and, you know, we're in every Walmart in the nation. Uh, so I have experience working in the Coachella Valley, in the city of Coachella. Uh, and having worked in most of the cities in the Coachella Valley, uh, when it comes to working with, you know, Gabe, a lot of us know him as Gabe. He's, you know, he and his staff and, and community development, I can, I can say, there's nobody better. It's, you know, I, I call him, he picks up and if he's busy doing something, he gets back to me quick. So it's just been a very positive experience. And from a perspective of someone who conducts business, you know, with the city. Okay.
Chris, go ahead.
Um, good, well, yeah, good afternoon. Uh, my name is Chris. Um, I wanted to speak in support of Gabriel, Dr. Gabriel Martin. Don't really have anything prepared. Um, I just felt compelled, um, after late hearing, um, that this was coming to the council. Um, that it was important to speak on, uh, support for Gabriel Martin and what he has done for the community. And I was gonna speak on a lot of different items, um, to express the good that he's done, but I think the community has spoken. You have about maybe two or three people that have spoken in this entire time in opposition of, um, or in support of, of relieving Gabriel Martin. You, council members should, should feel the, the voice of the people. If this was done at six or five in the afternoon when the, the normal council meetings are done, you would have had an even more overwhelming support. I think the people that showed up today aren't just people making money, they're community residents. They're people who care about the city and the change that comes about and the repercussions of the wrong type of change that come about. So I think that speaks volumes on Dr. Martin's not only impact, but his good work that has happened in the city of Coachella. Um, i- it comes, it comes to my mind that how can a brand-new council or council members make such a huge decision on someone that they haven't even had an opportunity to work with? I've had an opportunity to work with Gabriel Martin, not only, um, on projects with the city, but also he has helped families and friends to get direction on what they need or what questions they have as far as support or projects or other things that they're looking for for the city. He doesn't back down, he doesn't shy away, he answers calls. It, it just, it blows my mind that someone would try to discredit his character. Everyone that has spoken about Gabriel Martin has said how great of a character he has. And it, it should, it shows, it shows with the community of the people that are there. Again, just look at the, the, the Zoom meeting and look at the audience, you don't see it full with, with businessmen or, or, or construction, um, developers. You see it with the people, the community, the elders, the people that are there supporting Mr. Ma, Dr. Martin. Um, and as far as transparency goes, it's a red flag when you have a meeting at 10 AM on Tuesday when you have a working-class community. Nobody in the community could come and yet they'd made time to come in support of Mr. Martin, Dr. Martin. So my only suggestion would be, if you guys feel strongly about this, run a survey with his, with his employees, run a survey with the staff. See if their opinion aligns with your opinion. Do a survey with the community, do some community outreach. Get to the root cause of what's going on, try to get some community input, don't make a hasty, opinionated decision on this because it's gonna have a big impact. And it's kind of a rough way to start your tenure or your, your, your four years on a 10 AM meeting. It's just not the way to go. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and I'm sorry I missed your name.
Chris.
Chris, thank you, Chris. And, uh, council, I do apologize, I didn't realize I had two other request to speak forums underneath the other one, so I'm gonna go ahead and call them up, they're here in person, Castelo Estrada.
Good afternoon, council. Uh, thank you for allowing me to speak. I wanted to speak to you, uh, as a resident, I've lived here in Coachella my whole life. I wanted to speak to you as a, one of your colleagues at the Coachella Valley Water District. And I wanted to speak to you as a staff of, uh, one of your departments overseeing the water and sewer, uh, at the city of Coachella. Um, I've been at the Coachella Valley Water District now for, for 10 years. I've been at the city for 12 years and I've had the privilege of working on a lot, a lot of different projects, uh, big, uh, big projects, complicated projects. And I, and I, uh, was hearing some of the speakers and I wanted to, to follow up on that, on the, on the, the, um, the comment, uh, of how critical staff is to the operation and the daily business of agencies, not just here in this city, but, uh, in other, uh, any other type of business and other public agencies. And so I, I am concerned, um, that disruption to what I feel is a, a good working relationship between the staff, uh, you know, we, we have big challenges in front of us. I think one of the big challenges that you're aware of is our need and, uh, our ability to treat chromium six from our drinking water, that's gonna be a, a huge project. We're calculating that's gonna cost the city anywhere from about ninety to a hundred million dollars and I, and I think that's a, a, a big task that we have in front of us that, uh, would be difficult to deliver on even with the structure that we have now. And, and, uh, disrupting that structure i- is gonna make it certainly harder, but maybe even, uh, uh, impossible, right? It's just, uh, these, these are the types of things that, that I get concerned about and so, you know, I just wanted to point that out. I, I, I agree with the comment that was made that if I think the staff had the ability to speak freely, uh, without concern of, you know, they maybe, they might be next, uh, that they could talk to you and, and express how they feel about the direction of the city and, and, and the movement and, and the progress that's being made. And I think a lot of us share the concern that, 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 that this is gonna cause some disruption at some level. Uh, it might put the city on a, on a tailspin for maybe a year, maybe more. Um, but, uh, you know, I was debating whether I should come up and talk and, and after hearing all the comments, you know, I, I, I thought that I should, so thank you for, uh, allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Next up, we have Gabriel Perez.
Good morning, mayor, members of the city council. Gabriel Perez, I'm your Development Service Director, also the Communities Development Service Director. Um, you know, I just wanted to mention kind of why I'm here working at the city. I first started in 2004 and I remember the old way of doing business in the city where a lot of our executive team did not believe in the residents and the ability for the city to be the best in the Coachella Valley. And that was upsetting to me. I was able to leave and work for other communities, La Quinta, Riverside and San Clemente and see, uh, what it means to have good governance. Um, I was inspired to come back here with the idea that the work that we would do would be at a high level of excellence. And that's important to me to be he, be here and to have a supportive environment to make that happen. Gabe has created that supportive environment that allows us to be excellent. Um, back in the day, it used to be working in silos. Department heads were not communicating with each other. Now we have action teams to tackle all these challenges. Some of the folks that were talking about the sphere of influence, they had the option to choose between Indio and the, the, the less-resourced city of Coachella. And they decided Coachella. Why? Because we brought our A-team to the community. And we want to do that all the time for our community and you have the person that supports that, right? I stay here Friday, Saturday, Sunday. If you want to see my car at City Hall, I'm here every day, I'm here till eight o'clock at night. I'm only here because this city supports excellence and Gabe supports that. That's the only reason. Drive by, you know, at night tonight, I'm gonna be there. But I'm gonna be there because Gabe supports the work that we do and the big ideas. He supports the out-of-the-box thinking. Because to be able to transform the situation in the community of Coachella requires a lot of work. And it's harder than any other community in the Coachella Valley and it takes a lot of dedicated work. And that's why I'm committed to do that for you commu, uh, council members. But I want you to make this best decision. I work for you. Um, I want you to take that into account. That's really important to me. I hope you realize that we are delivering from you, for you guys, in a very big way. So, um, thank you for the opportunity, council, uh, for this opportunity and I hope you make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Do we still have hands raised on Zoom?
Uh, yes, we do.
We can continue with Zoom?
Estela, go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is Estela Acuna. I work at UC Riverside and I'm calling in to support, um, Dr. Gabe Martin, who is also a fellow Highlander. Uh, I wasn't a student with Gabe, but I was, um, an advisor of such and even as a student at UC Riverside, he was actively involved. And so those of you that are characterizing Gabe as this person that's passionate about the comunidad, it's been since he's been a student and I've been able to witness that and been able to mentor him as well. And so it's, it's an honor to see him grow, right, as an individual, getting his doctorate degree and going to a city of Coachella, right, choosing to go to Coachella. He is not a resident. I am not a resident either, but I am from the Valle. My family lives in Coachella, I'm from Indio. Um, I live in Riverside now and I work at UCR, but it's been great to witness his growth and his commitment to the comunidad. Um, it takes a lot, right? Many people, you could work many places, right, but he chose, um, Coachella. And it sounds like from the residents and community leaders and business owners, right, that we selected a good person to help support and lead the city of Coachella. Um, I'm, you know, we've engaged in meaningful discussions about enhancing educational opportunities and bridging the gap between the city of Coachella and higher education institutions like UC Riverside. And we've talked about and discussed creating a, a scholarship for those that are from the CB High School that have been selected, you know, that, um, to go to UC Riverside, right? So coming together as a comunidad, creating a scholarship. And so he's very interested in supporting our students and, and their ability to go to higher education. Um, and it's a testament, right, to his dedication and community's growth to local success, right, of, of, of committing to the students there. In addition, we talked about having a send-off of sort in the city of Coachella in Spanish where we could honor the students going to UCR and their familias in the city of Coachella. And he's offered resources and space because I wanted to do it at the Palm Desert Campus, but he's like, why not do it in the city, right, where they're coming from? And so we're talking about these opportunities to improve our residents. And, you know, as also as a board member of the Inland Empire Latino Lawyers Association, we have worked with, um, Dr. Martin and Carlos Campos of creating exclamationary clinics um, for our residents also in Coachella, right? So a lot of good things happening, um, providing the essential services and opportunities for all of our comunidades, right? Not just the business people, it's the people that also need second chances, people that need opportunities within the city. Um, and so I wholeheartedly support Dr. Gabe Martin. Um, and I'm confident in his leadership will continue to bring positive change for the comunidad that, that's needed and that's deserved, right? Our communities deserve leadership that is committed to uplifting the entire comunidad. Thank you.
Marissa, go ahead. Marissa, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, my name is Marissa Sures. I'm a long-term resident of Coachella. Um, I just now found out about the proposed decision. And I'm concerned about, just like everybody else, a lack of transparency. It's a serious fault in leadership. I'm just as shocked as everybody else about this. I'm not aware of any negative impact that could have moved the council to make this decision. Dr. Martin and our city attorney Carlos Campos have had quite a positive impact, in my opinion. I know this is a political move, but it is, um, highly one-sided. As a resident, I hope you remember the residents and the community and those that will be impacted by your decision. This can very well impact your political careers and as we push forward to a better future, I hope you do better. And I'm wondering who is a, wonder who you plan to appoint in the future. I hope, um, you reconsider your decision. And, um, you know, I hope you do better. Thank you.
Mr. Garcia, go ahead.
Yeah, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I agree with the decision that's being made, but, uh, I don't know if they're embarrassed or why they don't wanna tell us the reason why. They're, uh, doing this decision, but the community wants to know the reason why. I don't know if they're covering up for him or for them or for who, I don't know. But the truth will set you free, my friend. Like, como digo, uh, lo, amas en español, que la comunidad quiere saber por qué lo están corriendo. Si andan de tranzas o, o qué, por qué no están cubriendo este, la información de por qué los están corriendo. Gracias.
Stephanie, go ahead.
As a resident of Coachella, I'm just voicing my support for the, um, decision that the city council is making. Um, I think it's imperative that we address the deeply rooted nepotism that has plagued our community for far too long. And our community of Coachella deserves leaders that prioritize transparency, integrity and accountability. Um, and deserves people who are committed to serving the best interests of the people and not just their personal or political connections. Um, our community will continue to thrive when its leadership reflects the values and, um, its residents. It's time for a transformative change and I think in, you know, the new council members that have been appointed, I think it speaks to the larger majority of the Coachella, the city of Coachella that is in support of this change. Um, and I think many individuals in the community are becoming aware of these connections um, and are ready for that change to take place. And we need a governance structure that fosters trust. Um, rather than, you know, continuing to have a structure that is clouded by self-interest. So, um, just wanna express my support for the decision that has been proposed. Um, I think we can create a more equitable future for Coachella. Thank you.
Luisa, go ahead.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Uh, I'm Luisa Eredia. I, uh, work at Palm Springs Art Museum. I'm the Chief Education and Community Engagement Officer here. Um, and I just wanted to share a bit about, um, the museum's relationship with the city of Coachella that was fostered um, through the efforts of both Gabriel Perez and Dr. Gabriel Martin. Um, when I came into the position, you know, we really wanted to see how we could start building bridges with the city of Coachella so that um, the museum could have a present- so that the museum could have a presence there and so that we could help build inroads so folks could also come to the museum. When we approached Gabriel and Gabriel, you know, they were very interested. And one of the things that I found so heartening about our discussions was that Dr. Martin really asked about how the museum was going to give back to the city of Coachella so that the relationship wouldn't be one-sided. And, you know, it was a great ask, something I certainly believe in. And through those efforts, we've had a library art program where we've taken art educators into the libraries and where the city of Coachella has helped to fund buses or A-bus for the residents of the city to come to the museum on a family day when we open our doors to everyone. So just to share a little bit about the relationship that we've been able to build kind of through working with Dr. Gabriel Martin. Thank you.
TF, go ahead.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Tanya. I am a resident of Coachella. I've been living here my entire life, past 34 years. And I recently participated in the Resident Academy, graduated November 2024. And I do not know Mr. Mine personally, but just from what I observed, he was at each and every Resident Academy meeting, and I got to learn what it is or what it takes to run a city. We got presented with different departments, and each department had nothing but good things to say about the city manager. So I just wanted to voice my, my voice and to reconsider removing him from office.
Thank you, Tanya.
Dwayne, go ahead.
Good morning, esteemed council. This is Dwayne Young. I'm a proud graduate of CB High School, 1968.
Hey, Dwayne, you have a little bit of feedback there.
I'm sorry.
You have a little bit of feedback. Can you take it off your speakerphone? If you can mute or resume while you talk.
Yeah, this is Dwayne Young. Good morning, esteemed council. I'm a proud graduate of CB High School, 1968. Strongly support Dr. Martin. Please reconsider. The community has spoken strongly in its support. Please, please listen. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dwayne.
If there's anybody online who would like to make additional comments, please raise your hand. Supervisor Perez, go ahead.
It's been a long morning, and I appreciate the conversation. I appreciate, obviously, the folks that I've called in as well as those that have written and those that are there, our constituents for the city of Coachella, and our leadership that's there at the dais, as well as staff. I would be there in person. However, I'm actually just finishing my Board of Supervisor meeting out here in Riverside. And I usually do not engage in local jurisdictions when it comes to policy or politics. However, I'm a constituent as well. And as a result of me being a constituent, a lifetime constituent, as well as my family, the Perez family, I felt it was important for me to at least say a few things here. And I wasn't able to listen in to all the other conversations, so forgive me if possibly I might say something similar to others. But I did hear a few things from the last couple of speakers. The concept of nepotism, what does that mean? What does that actually look like? You know, when you think about nepotism, you think about someone potentially that's a family member that you are creating a position for, and there is a financial gain. I think that's one way to consider that. I don't see, in my opinion, any nepotism whatsoever when it comes to Gabriel Martin. Gabriel Martin does not have any family members nor end positions of power, nor is he gaining any financial gain for his role as a city manager in the sense of not having a family member in a position of power, including myself. When it comes to change, change is always difficult, and I hear you. And we are elected to make the toughest decisions at the toughest times, and sometimes those changes are unpopular, uncomfortable, very difficult to make. But we need to make them, and we need to bring them up. However, when we do so, it's important that we do so in a way in which it is transparent. I also heard the word transparent. I understand that this conversation was changed from an evening to a day. Now, you have every right to do so, but, you know, most likely when folks are available are in the evening. How many times have we always talked about? And all of you there in the dais have been critical of me of having meetings or not having enough meetings where the public is engaged. And we've had discussions where we have said, and you have told me, you ought to have meetings in the evening. How did this meeting change from having it in the evening to a daytime meeting? And why so? And then why behind closed doors to an evaluation and not being printed on an agenda? That's against the Brown Act, and that's the reason why you had to do what you're doing here today. Let's, let's, let's really be fair here. Let's really be equitable here. You know, the work that you see that is happening in a city of Coachella, these changes, these positive changes that are going on, it's not because of nepotism or it's not because someone's making money off it. You know, it's because people care. We care, and I would even include those individuals right here that I'm at odds with on that dais. I know you care too. I know you care. And maybe this is what we needed for us to have an honest conversation with ourselves as to what is the future of Coachella? And how are we going to plan strategically where we at least collaborate, communicate, cooperate? Figure out how we can work together. That's how we're going to thrive, folks. The changes that I've seen in the city of Coachella, honestly, folks, I've seen them in the last 20 years. And I grew up here, just like you. You can't say no to that. You cannot say that you don't see affordable housing being built down the street from you. You can't say that you don't see a county building that was just built that provides social services to people. You can't say that you don't see businesses that are coming in, like a Panda Express, for that matter. You can't say that that's not happening. You can't say that the streets are being paved or repaved or that there are not going to be islands. Those are happening as we speak. It took a long time, folks, for us to get here to this space. It really took a long time. It did not happen overnight. It took all of us to perhaps go on to higher education, learn from our parents, engage, engage with the community, have a love for the city, and come back home and say, we want to do better. This did not happen overnight, and Gabriel Martin? Yeah, I've known him for quite some time, but because I know him and because I believe in his skillset, because I trust his word, I know that he's not going to go behind my back and say anything negative. And I assure you, as a city manager, he wouldn't do that with anybody else sitting on that dais. I ask you all to truly reconsider. I know my time is up, and I apologize for going a little more than I should, and I apologize for getting emotional, but I'm pleading with you on behalf of my family and the forty-some thousand residents that live in the city of Coachella. This is not the right decision. If anything, evaluate him, take time, figure this out, where he can improve, and let's move forward together. Thank you. Pray indulgence.
Thank you, Supervisor Perez. Is there, I see another hand raised.
Yes, Christian, go ahead. Christian, go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Christian. I'm a resident of Coachella. I just want to say, we voted Figueroa Perez, and we did it for a reason. We need change, and I think it's important to remember that. It's not easy. They're making the tough decisions, and I think we just need to remember that, that we put them there for a reason, and they're doing what they need to do.
Thank you. Any other Zoom users, please raise your hand if you'd like to comment. There are no further hands.
Okay, thank you.
Address us, any city staff that would like to address us, anybody outside that would like to address us. I'm seeing none. We'll go ahead and think we have a number of letters that we received as well.
We did, so far.
To the record.
That's correct. So far, we have sixty-three written communications and more, from my understanding, that are continuing to go into the email. So I will start off with reading a couple of them, since we have in the past read aloud anything that was two hundred words or less. So I want to start with, we received one, one letter from Ray Leon, and it reads as such. "As a mayor from a city, I can share that it is not easy finding a talented, effective, well-educated, and ambitious city manager that can commit one hundred and ten percent to the people, especially the most vulnerable. Coachella is lucky to have Dr. Gabriel Martin. Not only is he professional but humble and good in engaging with the community residents from all walks of life." Our next letter reads as such. It states, dear, it's, and let me start off, it is from Leila Namvar. And it reads as such. "Dear city of Coachella Council members, I am writing this letter in strong support of Dr. Gabriel Martin, the city manager of Coachella, for the exemplary leadership and unwavering dedication he has shown toward improving the community and enhancing the quality of life for its residents. Under Dr. Martin's stewardship, the city of Coachella has experienced significant advancements that have positively impacted the lives of countless residents. His strategic vision and innovative approach to governance has fostered a thriving community built on inclusion, growth, and sustainability. Dr. Martin has been instrumental in spearheading programs and initiatives that address critical community needs, from improving public infrastructure and supporting economic development to expanding access to essential services. His work has consistently reflected a deep commitment to well-being of Coachella's diverse population. His leadership has not only facilitated the creation of new job opportunities, but also cultivated an environment where local businesses can flourish. Furthermore, Dr. Martin's emphasis on community engagement, collaboration has strengthened on the bond between the city administration and its residents. He has championed initiatives to enhance public spaces, promote cultural events, and ensure equitable access to resources, helping to make Coachella a vibrant and inclusive city for all. Through his tireless efforts, Dr. Martin has set an inspiring example of what effective leadership can achieve. He has proven to be a leader who listens, a visionary who acts, and a dedicated advocate for the people he serves. It is with the utmost confidence and enthusiasm that I offer my support for Dr. Gabriel Martin. His remarkable contributions to the city of Coachella have left an indelible mark, and I am certain that his continued leadership will drive even greater progress for the community in years to come. Sincerely, Leila Namvar." This next email has been forwarded to council as well. It's from Esperanza Arce. "Honorable members of Coachella City Council, as a proud homeowner, family member, and friend to many Coachelanos, I am deeply disappointed by the proposed action to terminate our city manager, Dr. Gabriel Martin. At a time when tragedies around the world demand our focus on compassion, it is shocking that several council members have chosen to prioritize this divisive and unnecessary action. Instead of dedicating resources to critical issues such as supporting families impacted by devastating fires, addressing our homeless crisis, or organizing community events to bring hope to our children in need, we are wasting taxpayer dollars on a decision that serves personal agendas rather than the public good. To Councilmember Yadira Pérez, as a sheriff deputy, you have an obligation to lead with integrity and serve the community. Your participation in this decision raises serious concerns about a potential conflict of interest as Dr. Martin oversees the very contract that funds your department. I urge you to recuse yourself from any action against Dr. Martin as failing to do so undermines both your role and the trust of the community. To Dr. Figueroa, I appeal to your intellect and integrity. Do not allow yourself to be used as a pawn in misguided effort that serves no one but a select few. Think rationally and make a decision that reflects your duty to the people of Coachella. This city deserves leaders who prioritize unity, progress, and community well-being. I urge you all to reconsider this action and refocus your efforts on what truly matters to Coachella. Thank you for your time." And I just want to state, none of these emails that I'm reading are any of the constituents that have spoken either through Zoom or in person. This next one is from Diana Casada, who is a citizen. "I am in disbelief that the moment our city of Coachella is moving forward, the council wants to change that. What backdoor deal are you promising to each other? The corruption is obvious with this Brown Act violation. Dr. Gabriel, we are with you today and always." Citizen Diana Casada. This next one is from, actually, this next one is from Marni Ravalo Raíces Cultura. She did speak, so I'm going to just note that this letter has been submitted to council, and her comments were made public here in person. This next email is from Luz Gallegos, and it reads, "Good morning. I just heard that the council will be discussing the employment of the city of Coachella city manager, Gabriel Martin. Our city manager has been instrumental for the advancements of our city. I am asking for council to fully evaluate his work and leadership before making any decision that may impact our city and community. Thank you, Luz Gallegos." This next one is from Lorena Robles, and it reads, "Hello, my name is Lorena Robles, and I was part of the last Resident Engagement Academy and would like to comment that I would want to see this meeting be rescheduled to an afternoon, six p.m. session like the usual council meetings, because I feel like more people have an opinion about this. And I feel like the people of Coachella enjoy our current city manager, and I too, I too want him to stay on because I feel like he truly represents the past, present, and future of Coachella." Our next one is from Yvonne Zapata. "Dear city of Coachella, I am writing reflecting on this recent disheartening news on the decision pending for Dr. Gabriel Martin. It feels necessary to pause and acknowledge the incredible work Gabriel has been part of for our community. His dedication to the city of Coachella and its people has been inspiring. The leadership I witnessed as an alumni of the city of Coachella Resident Engagement Cohort is a testament to the power of servant-hearted teamwork. I vividly remember participating in side-by-side community outreach efforts with Gabriel, his family, and other city employees. The intensity of the work never deterred him. Instead, he met it head-on with enthusiasm and a positive attitude that uplifted everyone around. Whether it was moving supplies, engaging with a resident, or simply setting the tone for collaboration, he exemplified what it means to lead by example. Thank you, Dr. Gabriel Martin, for having passion for Coachella and commitment to serving its people. It's rare to find someone who not only leads but works shoulder to shoulder with their team, fostering a sense of unity and shared purpose." fostering a sense of unity and shared purpose. Thank you for your unwavering dedication to our city. You have made a profound impact on this community and your efforts will continue to inspire others to work together for the greater good. Please know that your contributions are deeply appreciated and trusting. All the best outcome. With gratitude and respect, Yvonne Zapata." This next one is from Christopher Martinez. "Good morning, council. I find it very disturbing that there is enough consensus at a council to bring up a special meeting to make a public display or personal opinions of the city manager's performance, and that's making waves across the local news stations. The agenda item states an evaluation for the city manager's performance. How can part of the council give a valid evaluation when they've freshly been elected and have not been afforded the opportunity to even work with Mr. Martin? I've had the pleasure of working directly with Mr. Martin and seen his love and passion for the city of Coachella. He's not a native, but has become an adopted son of Coachella by planting his roots with his family here. He has worked his way up and was seen fit to be appointed city manager by the previous council, a council that did have the opportunity to witness his work. He is a prime example to city employees that if you work hard enough, the city and its council is willing to hire from within the highest positions on staff. Relieving Mr. Martin of his position will reverse this sentiment among the staff and set a bad precedent. If this is truly about performance, get an evaluation survey from the employees that work directly under him. Don't make a hasty, opinionated decision. Get evidence and do the necessary research to have a sound evaluation. A Coachelano like Mr. Martin deserves better." This next one is from Daniel Garcia. "My name is Daniel, a resident of Coachella and someone deeply invested in the well-being and growth of the city of Coachella. Today, I am here to voice my strong support for Gabriel Martin to continue serving as the city manager. Under Mr. Martin's leadership, Coachella has experienced remarkable progress in key areas for economic development to improved community services. His ability to engage diverse stakeholders, implement innovative solutions, and prioritize equity in decision-making has made a significant impact on the quality of life for residents. As someone who has dedicated my career to fostering equity and opportunity in underserved communities, I recognize the value of having a leader who truly understands and represents the needs of the people. Dr. Martin has consistently demonstrated a commitment to inclusivity, transparency, and accountability, qualities that are essential for a city manager. Moreover, his collaborative approach has fostered trust and unity among various sectors, paving the way for sustainable growth and long-term success for Coachella. At a time when strong and steady leadership is more critical than ever, I firmly believe Gabriel Martin is the right person to continue guiding the city forward. I respectfully urge the council to retain Dr. Martin as city manager and to support the vision and momentum he has established for Coachella. Thank you for your time and consideration, Daniel Garcia." This next email is from Diana Gomez. "I am beside myself finding out our beloved city manager..." I believe I already read this one. It reads exactly the same, so I apologize. I'm going to go ahead and put this one to the side. Elizabeth Navarro is the next one. "As a Coachella resident, I strongly disagree with those who are attempting to fire our city manager. Dr. Gabriel Martin has done so much to evaluate our city and has consistently demonstrated exceptional leadership. Under his guidance, we've seen significant improvements in infrastructure, public services, and economic development. He has fostered community engagement, prioritized the needs of our residents, and worked tirelessly to ensure that Coachella continues to thrive. Removing someone who has brought such positive change to our city would be a mistake. We need leaders who truly care about our community, and he is one of them." The next one is from Maria Ortiz, a Coachella resident. "Dear council members, I am deeply concerned about the recent votes by three members to renew the contracts of our city manager, Dr. Gabriel Martin, and city attorney Carlos Campos. It is evident that there is a plan at play that raises questions about its alignment with the best entrance of Coachella residents. I want to take this opportunity to express my full support for both our city manager and city attorney. Their leadership and dedication have been instrumental in advancing the progress of our community, and I believe they remain essential to our city's continued success. Thank you for your attention to this matter. Sincerely, Maria Ortiz, Coachella resident." This next one is from Eduardo Seja. "I believe removing our city manager, Dr. Gabriel Martin, would have detrimental, would be detrimental to our community. His leadership has been a driving force behind our city's progress and prosperity. Dr. Martin has worked tirelessly to improve Coachella from advancing infrastructure to fostering economic development and creating opportunities that benefit everyone. His dedication to our community is unmatched, and the positive changes we've seen under his guidance speak for themselves. Taking him away from this role would undo much of the progress we've made. Coachella needs a leader like Dr. Gabriel Martin to continue moving forward. Edi Seja." This next email is from Isela Murillo, who also spoke during our Zoom, so I will go ahead and put this one to the side. This next email is from Mario Ornelas, D R. Horton, who also was available and spoke through Zoom. This next email is from Juan Martinez. "Good morning, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Juan Martinez and I reside at," and I will not read his address, but he is a Coachella resident. "I am writing to you to express my support for Dr. Gabriel Martin. I do not understand the council's stand or reasoning on why you would want to release a great leader within the city. Dr. Martin has demonstrated great leadership as Coachella continues to grow. As an almost forty-year citizen of Coachella, I have seen and lived through the struggles and successes Coachella has been through. So my question to the city council, especially those that want Dr. Martin terminated, is why release a good leader when all is functioning well, when Coachella continues to strive? I do not understand. It is like releasing a head coach from a championship team. If Dr. Martin is released, I will lose all my faith in the newly-elected city council, and they will not have my vote and of others when reelection time comes around. Please reconsider and retain Dr. Martin. This is not a time to be politicking. It is a time to work together and continue moving Coachella into a positive direction it has been heading. Respectfully, Juan Martinez." This next letter is from Eduardo Garcia. And it reads, "Dear Mayor Hernandez and honorable council members, I am writing as deeply, as a deeply concerned citizen to address the recent decision to place city manager Dr. Gabriel Martin on administrative leave. As a former mayor of the city and a former assembly member who has proudly served this region, I strongly urge you to reconsider this action given to Dr. Martin's exemplary leadership and the transformative progress Coachella has achieved under his guidance. His tenure has been marked by significant advancements that have strengthened our city's foundation and paved the way for continued growth and success. Furthermore, I am troubled by the scheduled time for today's special meeting set for ten A M. as it completely disregards and excludes working residents from participating. Providing all community members a fair opportunity to attend and express their perspectives is vital to maintaining transparency and trust in this critical decision-making process. Under Dr. Martin's leadership, Coachella has made unprecedented strides in areas that are critical to our city's future. His vision and leadership have contributed to financial stability, ensuring that our city's finances remain strong and well-managed. Through his efforts, Coachella has consistently secured much-needed resources for essential city projects and services that benefit all our residents. Dr. Martin is still within the first year of his five-year contract with the city. Terminating his contract at this time would not only disrupt the stability and momentum we have gained, but also result in a significant financial burden to taxpayers, potentially costing up to a quarter of a million dollars in contract payout. Such a decision would be fiscally irresponsible and could undermine the trust and confidence of the residents we are all here to serve. As someone who has seen firsthand the challenges and opportunities Coachella faces, I can confidently say that Dr. Martin has been instrumental in positioning the city for continued growth and prosperity. It is imperative that we maintain continuity in leadership to ensure the city remains on its upward trajectory. I respectfully ask that council reevaluate the decision and consider the long-term impact on our community, finances, and overall stability. Coachella deserves leadership that prioritizes progress and fiscal responsibility, and Dr. Martin has demonstrated his ability to deliver on both fronts. Thank you for your consideration of this important matter. Please feel free to reach out to me should you wish to discuss further. Sincerely, Eduardo Garcia, former Assembly Member of the Thirty-Sixth District and former mayor of the city of Coachella." Thank you all for your patience. Yeah, I do need some water, actually. Treasure, if you would like to help me read. Yeah, okay, great.
This one is from Dwayne Young and it reads, "Good morning, honorable council. Dr. Gabriel Martin has been extremely kind to our agriculture community over the years. He has been very supportive of growing Coachella Valley, our ag advocacy group. He was a proponent of the ag tour we held for the city council last year and has been a big..."
But I believe he already spoke on...
Thank you, thank you. Okay, this one is from Juan Guevara. "Dear city council members and to whom it may concern, my name is Juan Guevara, president of Bound Inc., and I am writing to express my strong support for Dr. Gabriel Martin. Dr. Martin has been an invaluable member of our city, consistently demonstrating his commitment to uplifting community members and supporting local businesses. Through his leadership, Dr. Martin has opened countless doors for businesses like mine and for the residents of Coachella. He has been instrumental in supporting numerous projects that have directly improved quality of life for our community, fostering opportunities and growth. His guidance and unwavering dedication has positively impacted not just individual businesses, but also the broader Coachella community. Dr. Martin's genuine care for our city and its residents is undeniable. His kindness, integrity, and love for Coachella shine through in everything he does. Removing him from his position would be tremendous loss to our community. I respectfully urge the council to recognize the immense value Dr. Martin brings to Coachella and allow him to continue his work vital, I'm sorry, his vital work for our city. Thank you for your time and consideration. Sincerely, Juan Guevara, president of Bound Inc." This one is for the Greater Coachella Valley Chamber of Commerce, Brandon Marley, which is the president and C E O. It reads, "Dear members of the city council, on behalf of the Greater Coachella Valley Chamber of Commerce, I am writing to express our strong support for retaining Dr. Gabriel Martin as city manager. His leadership has significantly contributed to Coachella's growth and prosperity. Dr. Martin and his team have been exceptional partners, fostering strong relationships with the business community. Under his guidance, the city has experienced remarkable growth driven by his vision and strategic leadership. He has also built a strong, capable team that continues to advance the city's goals effectively. Dr. Martin's deep community involvement and ability to build trust among stakeholders have further strengthened the collaboration and unity. He has been a steadfast advocate for businesses, helping foster economic growth. We strongly endorse Dr. Martin's continued leadership as city manager. His dedication and strategic vision are invaluable to Coachella's future and success. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Brandon Marley, president and C E O of the Greater Coachella Valley Chamber of Commerce." We also have Jasmine Seja. "I strongly oppose the decision by some board members to remove our city manager, Gabriel Martin. Under his leadership, our city has grown tremendously and we've seen progress that we can all be proud of. Dr. Gabriel Martin has been instrumental in driving economic development, improving infrastructure, ensuring that our city's needs are prioritized. He has brought innovative, innovative, I'm sorry, innovative ideas to the table, strengthened relationships with local businesses, and worked tirelessly to create opportunities for our residents. Coachella is on a path of growth and prosperity, and much of that success is due to his vision and dedication. Removing him from this position would not only be unjust, but also detrimental to the progress that we've made as a city. We need leaders like Dr. Gabriel Martin who truly care about Coachella and its future." Juan Garcia, "Good morning, distinguished city council members. My name is Juan Garcia and I serve as Deputy Director of the County of Riverside Department of Housing and Workforce Solutions. I regret that I am unable to join you in person today, but I am writing to express my unwavering support for Dr. Martin and to highlight the transformative work our partnership has accomplished under his exceptional leadership. Over the past four years, our department has been fortunate to collaborate closely with the city of Coachella to address the critical needs for affordable housing in the city of Coachella. Through these efforts, we have successfully completed two new affordable housing developments and initiated two additional projects, one currently under construction and another one in the planning stages. Together, these developments will deliver a total of four hundred and twenty-one much-needed affordable housing units, representing a substantial two-hundred-and-fifty-four-million-dollar investment in the city of Coachella. Beyond housing developments, our partnerships have made a meaningful difference in the lives of the residents through the down payment assistance program and the home rehabilitation program we have partnered with the city. We have assisted twenty-six homebuyers in achieving the dream of homeownership, empowering families to build stability and equity. Additionally, we have provided rehabilitation assistance to twenty-one households, ensuring that the residents can remain safe, livable homes, and preserving the city's existing housing stock. These significant accomplishments are a direct result of Dr. Martin's leadership, vision, and dedication. He and his team have been invaluable partners, demonstrating a steadfast commitment to collaboration and community-focused solutions. Their professionalism, innovation, and drive have been instrumental in delivering impactful outcomes for the residents of Coachella. As we move forward, we respect the city's goals and priorities and remain committed to our shared vision, I'm sorry, shared mission of expanding affordable housing opportunities and preserving existing affordable housing for our residents. We look forward to continuing our partnership with the city of Coachella and to building on the solid foundation of success we've achieved together. Thank you for your time and consideration. Should you have any questions or require additional information, please do not hesitate to reach out. Sincerely, Juan Garcia, Deputy Director for the County of Riverside Department of Housing and Workforce Solutions." This is from Eduardo Garcia. It reads, "Dear Mayor..." And then we have Rosa Seja. "Okay, I strongly oppose the effort to remove our city manager, Gabriel Martin. Under his leadership, our city has flourished, strengthening infrastructure, driving economic growth, and creating opportunities for all. Gabriel is more than just a leader, he's a constant presence at every event, sharing in our community's moments with an infectious smile and an undeniable love for our city. His dedication to Coachella is unmatched, and removing him would be a disservice to the progress and the unity that we've built together." Rosa Seja. This one's from Stephen Perez and it reads, "I disagree with the decision to remove the city manager and the city attorney from their roles. Over time, I have witnessed the growth and the progress in our city under their leadership. Removing them from their position risks undoing the strides we have made and could set us back rather than propel us forward. Stability and leadership is vital to maintaining momentum in the right direction. The decision to remove them also raises concern about unnecessary expenses. Hiring new leadership, conducting searches, and onboarding replacements will come at a cost to taxpayers, resources that could be better utilized for community programs and infrastructure. This move feels unwarranted and potentially disruptive to the progress that we have achieved as a city. I find myself questioning whether the newly-elected council members possess enough experience and insight to make such a significant and sudden decision. Was the special meeting truly focused on the best interests of the city? Did the newest council members have sufficient valid information to justify such drastic actions? As a resident, I urge the council to reflect on whether their decision aligns with the community needs and priorities. It is critical to ensure that the decision made in our city's leaderships are grounded in what's best for the people rather than personal or political motives. Maintaining the continuing of capable leadership is essential for Coachella's continued growth and success. Regards, Stephen Perez, resident of the city of Coachella." Francisco Arce, "The city council has a very big decision to make today. It's a shame that this item was put on the agenda to begin with, but now you are here and must make a decision, knowing that all the voters and the community members are carefully watching what you do and will highly scrutinize the action you take. With that in mind, I want to humbly share that firing Dr. Martin would be a horrible mistake. He is someone that I am proud to know for over twenty-five years and have been, and have seen firsthand the commitment and stellar work ethic that he has. I know that he represents the city of Coachella empirically, because I see it in everything he does. I have seen the pride that he takes in the plans, projects, and developments that he envisions and executes in this community. As a homeowner in this community, but more importantly, as someone who grew up in Coachella, I can tell you that we need more people like Gabriel. This is a man who is passionate for servant leadership and proud of our community. I implore you to reconsider, knowing their constituents are behind Dr. Martin and that this decision would negatively impact our great city of Coachella. However, should you decide not to reconsider, I want to thank Dr. Martin and remind him to hold his head up high, knowing that we are proud of him and that he did our people good. Thank you, Gabriel, for your support and dedication to this beautiful place and its beautiful people. God bless you and keep that passion and heart of yours, for that is what people like myself have always admired you and looked up to you. It's a shame that those blinded with control and power can't see that. We love you. Francisco Arce." Cesar Uarsano, "As a deeply invested resident of Coachella, I strongly oppose the effort by some board members to remove our city manager, Gabriel Martin. Under his visionary leadership, Coachella has experienced remarkable growth and transformation. Gabriel Martin has been a driving force behind the progress we see today. He has championed initiatives that prioritize the well-being of our community while building partnerships that bring opportunity and prosperity to our city. To disrupt this momentum by removing a leader who has proven his dedication and effectiveness would be a grave mistake. Coachella deserves leaders like Gabriel Martin who have passion and ability to guide us towards an even better future." Cesar Uarsano. This one is from Yarely Felix. "Dear city council members, my name is Yarely Felix and I am a lifelong resident of Coachella. I am writing to express my support for Dr. Gabriel Martin to remain as our city manager. Dr. Martin is highly qualified for this position and has consistently demonstrated his commitment to the progress and the well-being of our city. Dr. Martin's qualifications and expertise..." Dr. Martin's qualifications and expertise are evident in the progress Coachella has made under his leadership. Dr. Martin has been an integral part of our team, driving economic development, fostering community engagements, and addressing the needs of our growing city. His efforts have contributed to Coachella's progress and his deep involvement in the in the community shows his dedication to our success. The decision to consider terminating his contract without a valid explanation is not only concerning, but it creates uncertainty for our future and risk undoing the progress that we've made. Removing a leader like Dr. Martin would be a setback for Coachella, jeopardizing the stability and momentum we've worked so hard to achieve as a city. I urge you to consider the impact this decision will have on our community and to support Dr. Martin and continue his work as city manager. Stability, vision, and collaboration are essential for our city's success, and Dr. Martin embodies those qualities. Thank you for your time and consideration, the voices of Coachella residents who believe in Dr. Martin's leadership. Respectfully, Yareli Felix. We have Dawn Quigley, to whom it may concern, I would like to voice my appreciation for Gabriel Martin. He has been a great supporter of our local community and the industries that comprise of it. I hope that the great work he has done for our community is taken into consideration at his review. Don O. Quigley. Elena Bonilla, hello, my name is Elena Bonilla and I speak for myself and Adam Santiago. We have on fifty-one in Calhoun, we are greatly concerned for letting for the letting go of the city manager Gabriel Martin. When the annexation was in process, we had choice of either going to the city of Indio or city of Coachella. We selected the city of Coachella because the city manager was willing to move forward with the water line. The water line project is in process. We don't know what would happen if Gabriel's contract is terminated. I ask that you consider and keep Gabriel Martin as a city manager. This one is from Taletha Barcenas. Dear Coachella City Council Members, as a proud resident and educator in our amazing city of Coachella, I would like to express my support for the continuing service of Dr. Gabriel Martin. Dr. Martin has been a great asset to our community. He has significantly contributed to the development and the growth of our community. Furthermore, it is unfortunate that this meeting will be taking place so early in the morning. Had it been in the afternoon, it would have proven many working community members and the opportunity to show our support in person. Respectfully, Talita Savala, a master of education specializing in educational technology. This one is from Adriana Gonzalez. Dear mayor, city council, and city staff, as a lifelong resident of the Coachella and a local business owner, I have always been proud of the progress our city has made and the direction it is heading. Normally, I stay out of matters like this, but the recent decision to call a meeting at ten AM on a Tuesday, a time where most of us are working, feels unusual and concerning. I want to express my full support for Gabriel Martin, who has been instrumental in driving the positive changes we've seen in our community. His dedication and leadership are evident, and his efforts have brought resources and opportunities that benefit us all. I also question the reasoning behind this decision. Why is our city manager being removed without cause? This decision could cost the community not just financially in terms of the stability and progress we have worked so hard to achieve. Removing him without explanation undermines the trust and transparency we expect from our city leaders. I urge you to consider and support the to reconsider and support the leadership that has continued that has contributed so much to Coachella's growth and future. Thank you for your time and consideration. Sincerely, Adriana Gonzalez. Yesenia Espuro, dear Coachella City Council members, as a proud resident who was raised in the city of Coachella and educator in our amazing city, I am writing to express my strong support for the continued service of Dr. Gabriel Martin. Dr. Martin has been an invaluable asset to our city, significantly contributing to the development and fostering positive growth in countless ways. It is deeply concerning that a meeting regarding Dr. Martin's service is scheduled for the early hours of the day, a time when most community members are working and unable to attend to show their support and advocate on his behalf. This timing limits the ability of residents to participate in a decision that profoundly impacts our community. I ask you to consider the overwhelming support for Dr. Martin within our community and to ensure that these decisions regarding his service reflect the voices of those he has dedicated himself to serving. Thank you for your attention to this matter, for your continued support and commitment to the city of Coachella. Sincerely, Inés Espuro. Margaret Chirico, Dr. Martin, Mr. Martin has been supportive of the ag community in the area, and that being very dear to my heart, he should continue with the city of Coachella. So important to us and keep our ag alive and growing in our valley, please let him continue with the city on the projects he is working so hard to complete. The ag events, the soccer groups, and the future annexations. Starting all over will only delay these important issues. Thank you. Margaret Chirico. Mel Williams, to whom it may concern, we have a business based in Coachella and would like to voice our support for Gabriel Martin, the city manager. He has done a great job working closely with the local ag community, which is a significant employer within the Coachella community as well as of many of the city Coachella residents. It would be unfortunate if he were to be removed without a clear, transparent, justifiable reason for his removal. Mel Williams, Foster Gardner. Marisol Zamora Silva, dear Coachella City Council, first, I want to say that it is extremely disrespectful to the people who voted you in office for you to make a special beating about our city or about our Coachella city manager, Dr. Gabriel Martin, at ten AM, knowing that most people in our city work during this time. This is a topic that can have a major impact on our community, and making it difficult for people to attend makes it seem that there is something to hide agenda. There is an agenda to hide you want to make happen. Secondly, I grew up in Coachella Valley and have seen city government officials come and go, making no real change. I have seen them show up in public during election time and promise many things, and once they win, we don't see them again until a few months before the next election or in forums that gain the attention of the news. All this seems very disingenuous and a joke. These past three years, we have finally seen progress in the city, and a lot of that progress has been as a result of Dr. Gabriel Martin becoming Coachella city manager. He has brought millions of dollars into the city, bringing the resources to our community and creating opportunities and a sense of community. Instead of fixing something that is not broken by wanting to fire him, take a look at yourself and think about what have you done to better the community. Respectfully, Marisol Zamora Silva. Gretchen Diaz, Coachella Council Members, I am writing in support of Dr. Gabriel Martin, city manager for Coachella. I have known him and his family for several years, and I am confident in his morals and his abilities to serve the city. His intentions have always been for the greater good of the city. There has been a lot of changes and growth that I have positively impacted the city since he took office in two thousand twenty-one. Some of the main improvements include the areas of transportation, retail spaces, green spaces, energy improvements, housing, and more. The morale of the city is at an all-time high right now. For the first time in years, Coachella is on the map and people want to come and visit and spend their money in the city. The economy is better since Gabriel Martin took office. Dr. Martinez comes. Yes, Dr. Martin comes from a family committed to service and doing good in their community. I recommend that the city of Coachella keep Dr. Martin in office as a city manager because he has a vision for Coachella. Thank you for your consideration, Gretchen Diaz. Two more. George Tudor, to whom it may concern, I want to say it would be a shame if Gabriel Martin is removed as city manager of Coachella. He has done a good job for the city and should remain in his position. George Tudor Tudor Wrench. This one is from Christie Porter, Hidden Harvest Executive Director. I am writing in support of Dr. Martin, who has been a strong supporter of Hidden Harvest and the programs we developed throughout the twenty-five years we have worked in Coachella. Dr. Martin and his amazing team helped shepherd Hidden Harvest staff and board in selling our historic nineteen twenty-two warehouse on Peter Rabbit Lane in the city of Coachella. A number of businesses wanted to buy the warehouse, but we insisted that this building, with all of its history, stay in farming hands, teaching and growing healthy food for Coachella Valley residents, supporting our agriculture history. We appreciate the help Dr. Martin and his team gave us in making this possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, treasure, for helping me read those. I'm just going to ask you if you can just take a look at this one to see if it's one that you've already read. And I'm going to move into request to speak form that we just received in person for Job Huerta. And then following Job Huerta, we will have Reset Laura, and then we will continue with written.
Oh, sorry. I apologize.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and council members. My name is Hope Huerta. For the past two years, I had the pleasure of working with the city of Coachella in the sphere of influence, annexation, and efforts. During this time, I had the privilege working alongside Dr. Gabriel Martin, who exemplifies unwavering dedication and a deep commitment to his city and the residents he serves. Because of this, I'm qualified to speak in regards to this matter. Earlier, there was a comment made suggesting that if the city manager desired, a specific group of residents could have been annexed within six months. This statement appears to oversimplify the annexation process, which involves a thorough and structured procedure as outlined by the Riverside Local Agency Formation Commission from Linoaslavko. Legal and procedural requirements where annexation involve extensive community engagement, adherence to statutory guidelines, and oversight by relevant governing bodies. Such a process cannot be ununiquely expedited and requires transparency, collaboration, and due diligence to ensure fairness and inclusivity. I respectfully request clarification or correction of this statement to avoid any misunderstanding within the community, especially at this very delicate time. Thank you everybody for your time.
Thank you. Next up, we have Reset Laura.
Good afternoon, mayor, city council. Thank you for your time today. I'm going to speak from the heart. I don't have anything prepared, but what I can say is that in my role, I have the privilege of being exposed to a lot of the inner workings of the city as well as everything that's happening with the residents. I'm responsible for being the voice for the community and I can say that the progress is has been incredible. I'm personally inspired by Dr. Martin's leadership. I have the privilege of also sitting cat in quarter to his office, and it's an open-door policy. From from the standpoint of employee morale, I just, I haven't worked for many leaders in this capacity that truly care not only about the community, but it's resident, it's, I'm sorry, it's staff. And I believe we do our best work under people who inspire us and bring out the best in us. And I can wholeheartedly say that Dr. Martin has done that for me, and I'm only speaking for myself, but he has done amazing things and if if this is, you know, Dr. Martin's legacy, it's been my honor to work with you, and thank you for everything that you've done for the city.
Next up, we have Maritza Martinez.
Good afternoon, council. I was not going to speak equally kind of what Reset said. It's been really beautiful to see a lot of the outpouring from the community today, and I'm speaking today because we've gone through transitions before. This the city is not, I've lived a few transitions with the city. Transitions usually have happened with some, a little bit more, I guess, anticipated next steps. This one has been very different. We came back from the holiday and it's, we're ready to pivot for the council if that's the direction the council gives us. But I really wanted the opportunity to thank Gabriel for his leadership. I've seen the morale of the city change in the last three and a half years. I've seen our growth in our team executive-wise. Those are all things that I'm very sad if there are changes there. We again, we are your team. We will pivot as you require us to, but it's really pivoting requires a lot of moving parts that get adjusted, and there is similar to what Gastro mentioned earlier, there's there that that in itself is a whole different progress process that will incur energy that we currently are planning to move forward. We came in the twenty twenty-five ready to hit up a whole much more W's for the council. We've been working on a lot of W's through the leadership of our captain and looking for for direction as to next steps, but really wanted to thank Gabriel for everything that he does to support all of his team, his executive team, and his and and this agency as well as the community. I know that he loves this community. We all love this community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Selena Jimenez.
Good afternoon, mayor and council members. Selena Jimenez, Director of Economic Development. I stand before you, it's very difficult for me to stand up here because I'm very fond of all of you, all of you, Dr. Figueroa, Councilmember Vidal, Mayor Hernandez, Councilmember Delgado, and now Yadira, Councilmember Perez. I don't know you just yet, but I want to come from a place of love. I'm always told by our staff members and I'm always optimistic and I try to be, you know, I think at times unrealistic, but I guess that's why I'm a good fit in economic development is like we have to dream and dream big. And so I just wanted to come from a place of love and ask, could we think about a strategic planning session or something to facilitate cohesion? I'm sorry. This is very hard hard for me because I am, I want us to be Team Coachella. I want us to be Team Coachella and I want us to work together and I want us to maybe get a healing session for all of us so that we can think about working together. How can we get there? I'm very sure, you know, that this man right here, our city manager, will be more than willing to work with all of you because I want to see something else about him. Gabriel is very equitable. I would have never been promoted into this role if he hadn't, he could have picked anybody. He could have recruited externally. He could have definitely picked anyone, but he gave me an opportunity, you guys. He really did. He believed in my ability, even when I when I didn't. You know, there were many times that I worked long hours. I would see people go home and I'd be like, oh, I want to go home too. But I have these grants to write because as you all know, I was previously the grants manager. And so, so, you know, I commend Dr. Martin in believing in me when other people didn't, you know, because our previous city manager, Mr. Patterson, he was very harsh. He was very harsh and didn't actually celebrate innovation. He didn't welcome ideas. He had his own thoughts and he, you know, was very like, this is it. This is it. Okay. And so, you know what? Many a time, when he was the economic development manager, I would tell Gabriel, Gabriel, can you please whisper this in his ear? Tell him about this, okay? And he'd be like, I got you. I will do that. So he would do that, and then Bill would listen. Bill would listen. And and I'll never forget those moments, you know, because they mean a lot to me that he is someone that advocates for people who don't have a voice. And I just want to tell you guys that, you know, when we went to the film festival, I was there with Dr. Figueroa and Councilmember Delgado, Mayor Potem Delgado. And one of the recurring themes I saw that actors were repeating was the word love. And you know what? I chose for twenty twenty-five to be like, you know what? Let's make this about love, you know, because I know, I know it's so hard right now because these are very harrowing moments, and I know you've all been through so many things. But I do think that there could be some hope, you know, if we could just have a strategic planning session where everybody gives their ideas. No one will be made fun of. We have a healing session that that comes after and just to really bring people together because all of us are Team Coachella, and I know our supervisor echoed that. Out of all the comments I've heard today, I feel like the most the most special were some of the things that he said. And it's resonated with me because I do want to see us work as a team. I, this is Team Coachella, and we're the best in the entire Coachella Valley, and we can't do that. You know, when when there's uncertainty ahead of us, right? Because there is a little bit of uncertainty ahead of us. If you go forward with your decision, I think there's going to be a lot of uncertainty, and I have to tell you that I was shaken with fear to even think about coming up here, you know, because I I'm the sole provider for my family. And I'm at will. I'm at will. I could be let go, but you know what? It won't be for lack of performance because we, I will work very hard. I always, I always have, so I don't care what mandates come through. I will implement them, and you know that because you've seen that with me. And so I just want to say, could we think about an alternative option? You know, I know I respect your decision, whatever you decide, and we're here to serve, so. But I just want us to think about, you know, being compassionate and loving because that's what he is. I'm sorry, Gabe. I can't help it. But he's an amazing human being, and I just want people to know that publicly because he really is, guys, and I know you know that. I know you know that, you know, I know. Like I said, it's been difficult, but you know, I think everyone knows that he's an incredible human being. I just want you guys to take that with you today and like I said, we'll respect whatever decision, and so so thank you for hearing me out, and I'm sorry for the emotional.
Thank you so much.
Ruben? Go ahead.
Mayor, Councilmembers. I'm Ruben Ramirez, Controller. I've been here for 20 years and I've seen people serve my managers come and go. And in these two years, I've seen also the work that has been done under the city managers. Used to recap since Dr. Gabriel came in, I started seeing those changes. He started in Economic Development Department, some manager, then moved to Director. And that's what I can see all the changes starting to build up quickly than before. I became part of the team probably two years from now. And I think he has built this team that has worked together to get all these things done. Everything that you see, all the changes is because he has all, he has given us this leadership to work together. And we have done just because he has a good guidance for us. And I'm just proud to be part of the team. And I hope you guys reconsider this decision. I don't think is the best for the City of Coachella and for the whole administration. I think we are going through, we're building this up. We haven't done, we just start, we just start. We got so many things to have, have to be done. I mean, we haven't even started. We have like five years from now to complete everything that we just started. Removing, removing the city manager, I think it's going to hurt the whole project that we have right now built. I just hope that you guys reconsider. And maybe just like this, look what we are doing, look what he is doing. Six months, another year. I don't know. But I just hope you guys reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you.
Andrew.
Thank you. I don't think there's anything more I can say that hasn't been said by everybody. And I spoke last week as well, but I just wanted to acknowledge how difficult it is for staff to come up and speak, especially at my employees. And I want to say in all my years of experience, I've never worked with a team this strong. So I want to go in a different direction. I really want to compliment our entire executive staff. The team we have Coachella. And I also want to say that regardless of any decision that's made right now, I know in my heart, I've spoken to all of you, most of you. I know very much in my heart that every one of you has the best interest of Coachella in mind. We may disagree on what that path is, but I know that this is a council that wants the best for Coachella. And we have an executive team that also wants the best for Coachella. This is the strongest team I've ever worked with and just the courage it took for people to come up and speak their minds, knowing that they're at my employees and just want to compliment Selena and Maritza and Gabe and just really compliment the, the powerful team that we have here and let you know that we are always available. And as an engineer, I'm about building bridges, not burning bridges. And I know Coachella has a very bright future. The community and staff may not always agree with decisions, but our goal is to build bridges and make Coachella have a better future. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Delia Granados.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. My name is Delia Granados. I have been with the district for, I mean, with the city, sorry, for almost two years. I came here because of the city manager. I had heard a lot of great things about him. And I took a, I took a, my chance because I came from working with another agency for 25 and a half years. So I knew I was taking my chance, not knowing, only hearing about, you know, how great he was, but not really knowing much about him. So again, I don't know a whole lot about him, but just in the two years that I've been here, it has proven that all the great things that I had heard about him were true. He really is a great leader. He is very passionate about the city. He talks a lot about the city, you know, even though I know that he's not from here. He has embraced the city of Coachella and has called it his own. But he also is very supportive to his staff and from what I've seen in the short time, he has, he treats everyone like family. So I, you know, I, all the great things that I've been hearing from staff to the community, it, I, it's, it's true because I've got to experience that. So I'm hoping that that this will continue and that you give him the opportunity to continue to move forward with all the great things that he is doing and also with the, the relationships that he has established with the, the community organizations and, and with the, with staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Kearney.
My name is John Kearney. I've owned multiple businesses in Coachella for over 32 years.
Excuse me, can you raise the microphone, please?
Yeah, my name is John Kearney. I've owned multiple businesses in Coachella for over 32 years. There was a time when I was the highest tax generator for the city of Coachella. And I'm on, I'm on track to do that again. Now, about a year ago, I was having a little difficulty with a new project. And Denise reached out to me and said, what can I do to help you? And she was very helpful. She made a phone call to Gabriel. Gabriel called me, said, what can I do? And the two of them have been working together. I don't know what's going on. I called him two weeks ago to tell him I hired 32 employees. And he said, great, but I might not be there next Tuesday. I go, what's going on? He goes, I'm going to be replaced. You should come to the meeting. It's Tuesday night. Last night I called Steve Hernandez. I said, Steve, I've got 35 new employees in my business today. You should see it. He goes, you should come to the meeting tomorrow morning. I said, tomorrow morning? I thought it was tomorrow night. I got my tow truck out there. I was ready to leave to go to LA today. So I'm glad I came. I don't know what's going on, but I wish, this is an awesome team. I've been moving forward really good. I'm on track to be the number one tax generator again. So I hope you guys can work it all out. I, I want this, this man has reached out to me. Denise has reached out to me. So I don't know the inner workings of what but I want them both to stay and I want to continue to work with you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to continue with the written communications. So moving on to an email from Alma Romero. It reads, Dear Members of the City Council, I am writing to strongly recommend that Gabriel Martin remain in office. His leadership has brought over 50 million in grant funds for projects like the Rancho Las Flores Park expansion and library annex. Both set to open this year. He strengthened city finances, securing a five-year contract with the Sheriff's Department and has overseen growth, including 600 new homes and businesses like Aldi, Starbucks and Panda Express. His safety initiatives like LED streetlights and new bus transit hub show his focus on community wellbeing. Gabriel's character sets him apart. He is humble, hardworking and a visionary, fostering relationships and inspiring others. His dedication to community engagement through programs like the Resident Engagement Academy demonstrates his commitment to inclusivity and progress. Gabriel Martin has proven to be an exceptional leader and I urge you to keep him in office. Sincerely, Alma Romero. This next one is from Brenda Caxiola. Dear Members of the City Council, I am writing to strongly recommend that Gabriel Martin remain in office. His leadership has had a transformative impact on our city and his work continues to benefit residents in numerous ways. Under Gabriel's leadership, the city has secured over 50 million in grant funds for vital projects and programs. This year, we eagerly anticipate in the Rancho Las Flores Park expansion and the library annex, which will provide a new recreational and educational opportunities. Additionally, the city's strong financial standing has allowed for a new five-year contract with the Sheriff's Department, increasing public safety through additional deputies and services. Gabriel has also overseen significant growth, including six housing developments with over 600 new homes and the arrival of businesses such as Aldi Circle K, Starbucks, Panda Express and Altera Bank bolstering the local economy. He has prioritized safety by implementing new LED streetlights, safe trans signals in lanes and launching a new bus transit hub. Moreover, his commitment to affordable housing is evident with five new local low-income apartment projects underway. Beyond his accomplishments, Gabriel's character makes him an exceptional leader. He is down-to-earth, personable, humble and a visionary who works tirelessly to foster relationships and inspire others. He is a team player, communicative, loyal and deeply committed to the wellbeing of our community. His dedication to community engagement, including programs like the Resident Engagement Academy and Youth Commission, shows his passion for empowering residents and future leaders. Gabriel Martin's leadership has been instrumental in shaping a thriving, inclusive and safe city. I urge you to keep him in office so he can continue driving progress and making a positive difference. Sincerely, Brenda Caxiola. Next one is from Katia Lopez. My name is Katia Lopez. I am a proud resident of the city of Coachella. I've had the privilege of calling the city home for the past five years and my experience here has been truly rewarding. Growing up on the west end of the Coachella Valley, one of the things I've always appreciated most about Coachella is the strong sense of community, a community built on active engagement and a shared vision for the future. This community spirit has been greatly shaped by leaders like Dr. Gabriel Martin, whose work has elevated the city through impactful programs like TCC. I've had the honor of working closely with Dr. Martin on several occasions and I can confidently say that he is one of the most dedicated and talented individuals I've had the pleasure of collaborating with. Dr. Martin has deep understanding of the unique needs of our city and consistently puts the wellbeing of Coachella's residents above all else. His leadership, compassion and commitment to positive change have made a lasting impact. And I am grateful for the opportunity to work alongside him in advancing our community's goals. Frankly, I am surprised by the unfair treatment of Dr. Martin. Lastly, I am disappointed this meeting is at 10 AM and not after work hours. This does not allow equitable participation. This next one is from Berlinda Blackburn. Hello, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. I wanted to share with you my concern for the upcoming action proposed by the City Council. And she is also linking a article, City of Coachella Said Special Council Meeting by Uken Report. As a former employee with the city of Coachella, I am concerned with the proposed action being taken to remove the city manager, Dr. Gabriel Martin. For the past three years after my retirement from the city of Coachella, I have volunteered my time with the Fine Food Bank where I am assigned to deliver meals to 11 households in the city of Coachella. I am proud to see how the city continues to develop and achieve the growth that I had only seen on engineering plans. This growth is due to Dr. Gabriel Martin's transformative leadership as city manager. It is crucial to recognize the substantial progress Coachella has made under his tenure. Dr. Martin has spearheaded key initiatives, including the revitalization of Sixth Street, enhanced public communication through the city's first public information officer and youth development programs like the Government Pathways Internship, Internship Program. These efforts reflect his unwavering commitment to economic growth, community engagement and the future of Coachella's residents. The termination of such a visionary leader risks derailing ongoing projects and undermining public trust in the city's governance. It would also strain city resources with potential legal, financial and operational costs while creating uncertainty for staff and stakeholders alike. Leadership changes at this critical juncture may deter investments, weaken regional partnerships and slow the momentum that has been carefully built over years. We urge the City Council to consider the broader implications of this decision. Dr. Martin's track record demonstrates his ability to navigate complex challenges and deliver results that align with Coachella's goals for sustainable growth and community wellbeing. Maintaining leadership continuity is not just a vote of confidence in his vision, but an investment in the future success of Coachella. Thank you, Berlinda Blackburn with Blackburn Environmental Services, Chairperson of City of Palm Desert Resources Preservation and Enhancement Committee and former Environment, Environmental Programs Manager at the city of Coachella. This next one is from Javier Madrigal. As someone who grew up in Coachella, spending time in our parks, walking our streets and watching the city transform over the years, I am deeply saddened by the recent decision to terminate the city manager's contract. Coachella has made significant strides improving our parks, revitalizing transportation and enhancing downtown development. These advancements reflect the vision and hard work of many, including the city manager. To see this progress jeopardized now because of a shift in board dynamics is not only disheartening, but also unfair to the community. The city manager has been instrumental in driving the progress we see today. It's clear that the decision to terminate his contract is less about his performance and more about political agendas. This misuse of power threatens the, to undermine everything that has been achieved and risk destabilizing the direction of our city at a critical time. I urge Dr. Figueroa and Denise Delgado to stand firm in the decision they initially made to extend the city manager's contract. Their consistency in leadership are essential to ensuring stability and fairness. I also call on the entire council to provide the public with a transparent explanation for this decision. Coachella deserves leaders who prioritize the wellbeing of the community over personal vendettas or political maneuvering. This city is my home and I care deeply about its future. I ask you to reflect on the impact of your decisions and to act in the best interests of the people you represent. Sincerely, Javier Madrigal. This next email is from Veronica Valdez. Hi, City Council. I am shocked and disappointed by the decision to revoke the city, the Coachella city manager from his position. This move disregards the significant progress he's made for our city and undermines his dedication to its growth, particularly in creating jobs and advocating for youth. As a former City of Coachella intern, I've seen firsthand the positive impact his office has had on the community. The progress we've experienced in recent years is a direct result of his leadership. It's important to remember that the success of our city is not due to one individual. It's a team effort. However, the larger issue here is the potential consequences for Coachella's future. Revoking his position will have ripple effects and the long-term impact must be considered. Additionally, the decision to hold meetings at times like 10 AM excludes many of us who have jobs, families and responsibilities. Not everyone can attend meetings during the day. And this makes it harder for the community to engage. Meetings should be accessible to all, not just to those with flexible schedules. This isn't just about personal opinions. It's about what's best for Coachella's future. It's time for our leaders to prioritize the city's needs, set aside personal grievances and focus on what really matters, the wellbeing and growth of our community. Thank you for your attention to this important matter. Respectfully, Veronica Valdez. This one says Veronica Gomez. Hello, City Council. I'm honestly shocked and disappointed by the recent move to revoke. Yes, it is a different one. Just wanted to make sure. I'm recently shocked and disappointed by the recent move to revoke the city, the Coachella city manager from his position. This is a decision that only, only disregards the tremendous progress he's made for our city, but also undermines the hard work and dedication he's shown for its growth, especially when it comes to creating jobs and advocating for the youth. As a former City of Coachella intern, I can personally attest to the positive impact of his office has had on the community. The progress we've seen in the last few years speaks for itself and I believe it's a result of its leadership. We have to remember, he's not the only one involved in the success of our city. He's a part of a team, but the real issue here isn't just about one person. It's about the future of our city. Revoking his position will have ripple effects and it's crucial to take into account the long-term impact of this decision on Coachella's development. I apologize. I think this is the same email. So I'm going to move forward to the next one. It's written just slightly different, but it's the same sentiment. This next one is from Vitor Valdez. Hello, I'm truly upset by this move to revoke the Coachella city manager's position. If the reasoning is we need change, then where is the plan? What's the solution? I've seen nothing but positive progress under his leadership and it's frustrating to think that the city could lose someone who's been working hard for the community due to a hasty irrational decision. Just because someone wants change doesn't mean it's the right choice, especially when it feels like there's been no real consideration of the consequences. Furthermore, not everyone has the luxury of attending a 10 AM meeting, especially during work hours. How can the community provide feedback when their voices are excluded by timing like this? It feels like decisions are being made without properly engaging the people who actually live here. This kind of action could cost the city dearly and it's frustrating to see it happening without any clear answers. Respectfully, Victor Valdez, MBA. This next one is from Ruben Perez. I am deeply disappointed in the council's decision to hold a special meeting orchestrated by Councilmembers Delgado, Figueroa and newly elected Perez. This action reflects a disheartening display of ego and a misunderstanding of governance by individuals prioritizing self-interest over their duty to the community they represent. During Dr. Martin's tenure as city manager, this city has experienced remarkable growth and prosperity. As someone who grew up here, I can confidently say the city has never been stronger. Dr. Martin has secured millions in grant funding, including the TCC grant and urban greening grants, profoundly benefiting our community. To dismiss him without cause to satisfy personal ambitions would be a would be a grave disservice to the residents who entrusted you with their votes. It is especially disappointing that Councilmember Figueroa lacks resolve, and Councilmembers Perez is making this decision without experience working with Dr. Martin or understanding his contributions. Dr. Martin is one of the most accessible and community-focused city managers the city has had, a quality not reflected in those calling this meeting. Your actions jeopardize years of progress and risk setting the city back, potentially costing millions. The apparent Brown Act violation and scheduling this meeting at an unusual time to avoid public scrutiny show an alarming lack of transparency. While I hope you reconsider and act in the city's best interest, your decisions thus far have made clear where your priorities lie. For those of us who care deeply about this city, your actions are both alarming and disappointing. Thank you, Ruben Perez. This next one is from Jose Campos. I am writing to strongly urge you to retain Dr. Gabe Martin as City Manager of Coachella. His exceptional leadership during this pandemic, along with his success in securing critical grants, revitalizing downtown, and attracting new business, has been transformative for our city. Dr. Martin's forward-thinking, vision, and unwavering dedication has brought meaningful and lasting change to our community. His leadership has positioned Coachella for continued growth and success, and I firmly believe his contributions are vital to maintaining the positive momentum we've achieved. For the future of our city, I respectfully ask that you retain Dr. Martin in his role as City Manager. Thank you for your time and thoughtful consideration of a concerned Coachella resident. Sincerely, Jose Campos. This next one is from Miguel Navarrete. Dear City Council Members, I am writing to express my strong support for Dr. Gabe Martin continuing his role as City Manager of Coachella. Dr. Martin has been an exceptional leader, guiding our city through some of its most challenging times, including the COVID-19 pandemic. Under his leadership, Coachella has experienced remarkable progress, including new shopping centers, the revitalization of downtown, and millions of dollars in grants that have greatly benefited our community. Dr. Martin's dedication to the city's growth and well-being has been evident in the way he has prioritized long-term development while addressing the immediate needs of residents. His leadership exemplifies what true public service should be, a commitment to putting the community first. The strides made under his direction have paved the way for an even brighter future for Coachella. I urge the City Council to recognize the value of his leadership and keep Dr. Martin in his role as City Manager to continue the positive momentum he has started. Sincerely, Miguel Navarrete. This next one is from the Rodriguez family. Council members, it is concerning to learn that the evaluation of our City Manager will take place in a meeting rather than being based on his contributions to the community. During his tenure, Mr. Martin has facilitated the growth of business in Coachella and has demonstrated his respectfulness and capability in fulfilling his duties. He has not only excelled as the Economic Development Director, but has also proven himself as an effective City Manager. In conversations with Mr. Martin, his pride in our city and its community is evident, along with his aspirations for further development in Coachella. It is troubling that he faces scrutiny from council members months before his formal evaluation. As council members, including newly-appointed officials, it is imperative to maintain transparency with the residents who entrusted you with these positions. This council has recently dismissed the city attorney without providing reasoning to the community. As residents, we expect to be informed about the actions and decisions made by our City Council and representatives that impact our community. Sincerely, the Rodriguez family. This next one is from Milene Aguilar. I would like to point out several reasons on why the City Manager should be able to remain in his position. The city has been extremely successful forging partnerships with funders and other community-based organizations because of the support that has come from the top. There really is no real reason to let go of the City Manager, as those who initiated the action have the majority vote, which means they have majority control. It's not justified to remove the city's top leader without true justification. Milene Aguilar. This next email is from Amelia Rodriguez. Dear esteemed Councilmember, I feel compelled to voice my heartfelt concerns regarding the scheduling of the city's manager's evaluation on a weekday during a special meeting that many of our residents are simply unable to attend. This troubling arrangement casts a shadow over the transparency we so desperately need and risks alienating community members from vital decisions that profoundly impact our lives and livelihoods. It pains me deeply to think that we might dismiss City Manager Mr. Martin without a solid foundation of understanding and rationale. As guardians of our community's future, it is imperative that council members act in the best interests of the people, not swayed by personal biases. Mr. Martin has been steadfast champion for business growth in Coachella, embodying professionalism and competence that we are fortunate to witness. His journey from Economic Development Director to the City Manager is a testament to his unwavering commitment to our city and its residents. To see him scrutinized by council members mere months before his official evaluation is alarming. I passionately urge each council member, especially those who are newly appointed, to embrace transparency and genuinely engage with the residents who have put their trust in you. Our voices matter, and we deserve to be heard. Amelia Rodriguez. This next one is from Agustín Ariola. I'm going to... Agustín was here, so I'm going to put this one down. Because he did speak in person. This next one is from Jocelyn Vargas. And it reads, "Good evening, Mr. Peda. Please find enclosed public comment for closed session." Let me move down to esteemed council members. My name is Jocelyn Vargas, and I am writing as a concerned community member who has done extensive volunteer and professional work in the City of Coachella. I am writing in support of Dr. Martin, and I'm urging council to reconsider termination of his contract. Over the last ten years, I've partnered with the City of Coachella on numerous events and activities. We make a conscious choice to collaborate with the city, in part due to the leadership, professionalism, and vision of leaders such as Dr. Martin. Under Dr. Martin's leadership, the city has made progress and growth successfully, securing significant financial resources and building strong partnerships with organizations to provide residents with opportunities to thrive. Dr. Martin's leadership skills, ability to build strong coalitions based on shared values, is unmatched to our community leaders. Dr. Martin has demonstrated his commitment to this community by choosing to live with the community. He leads with compassion and empathy, making it easy for anyone to take part in the vision to make Coachella better for all of our families. As elected officials who ran committed to transparency and accessibility, I ask that residents and community members have an opportunity to provide input at a publicly-held meeting at an accessible time. Listening to residents will be evident that losing Dr. Martin would be a strong, significant loss to the City of Coachella, negatively impacting staff, community, and the strong partnerships that he has built over the last several years. Jocelyn Vargas. This next one is from Evelia Garcia. Dear City Council Members, I am writing to express my deep concern regarding the potential termination of Dr. Gabriel Martin's contract, a decision that stands to negatively impact not only his career, but also the families and future of this community. It is deeply troubling to see certain members of a city council entrusted to lead with dignity, integrity, and transparency taking such a radical action without providing any justifiable cause. Sound and just governance would have involved a thorough review of any concern about Dr. Martin's performance, followed by constructive feedback and guidance for improvement. If these measures had been unsuccessful, ample warnings would have been issued, ensuring that the termination, if necessary, would not come as a complete surprise. The manner in which some members of this council are handling this potential action abruptly and without due consideration reflects poorly on the leadership of this council. Such an approach is unprofessional, disingenuous, and lacks the compassion and integrity that the people of Coachella deserve. Dr. Martin has been a valued City Manager of this community, and it is crucial that he is treated with the honor and respect he has earned. I urge you to reconsider the decision and take a more thoughtful, fair, and compassionate approach in addressing any concerns. The future of our city and well-being of the families who live here depend on leadership that operates with integrity and respect. Respectfully, Evelia Garcia, proud Coachella resident. This next one is from Emmanuel Garcia. Dear Coachella leaders, I am writing to express my strong support for retaining Gabriel Martin in his current role as City Manager for the City of Coachella. His leadership has brought transformative progress to our city, benefiting both its residents and future generations. Under Mr. Martin's guidance, over fifty million in grant funds have been secured for innovative projects and programs. Key developments like the Rancho Las Flores Park expansion library annex are set to open this year. The city's finances are thriving, enabling a new five-year contract with the Sheriff's Department to enhance public safety with additional deputies and services. Housing and businesses' growth have flourished under his leadership, with six new developments adding over six hundred homes and businesses like Aldi, Starbucks, and Panda Express coming to the city. Infrastructure improvements such as LED streetlights, safe turn lanes, and a new transit hub prioritize safety and accessibility for residents. Five new affordable housing projects further demonstrate his commitment to inclusivity. Mr. Martin's dedication to community engagement is unparalleled. Programs like the Resident Engagement Academy and Youth Commission alongside student internships encourage public involvement and foster future leaders. His leadership also helped pass Measure Y, ensuring sustained revenue for public safety. On a personal level, Mr. Martin is a visionary, humble, hard-working leader who inspires trust and loyalty. His focus on collaboration, communication, and building relationships has created a strong forward-thinking team. I wholeheartedly endorse Gabriel Martin's continued leadership to ensure our city's ongoing success. Sincerely, Emmanuel Garcia. This next email is from Leonard R. Sauver. I just found out about the possibility of termination of Dr. Gabriel Martin from the City of Coachella. I would like to post my opposition to this decision and voice my support for him and the continuation of his position with the City of Coachella City Manager. I have been a City of Coachella employee for three and a half years, and I find Dr. Martin to be very professional, very friendly, considerate, and very caring about his employees and citizens. In the last three and a half years, I have seen a major amount of progress in the City of Coachella with various new projects and a complete revitalization of the downtown Pueblo Viejo area. He has been a great City Manager, and it's been a pleasure to work with him. I have worked for another city for many years who changed their City Manager, which resulted in extreme dysfunction of the city, an extreme drop in morale, and a departure of many well-qualified long-term employees. I hope that the City Council sees the light and retains Dr. Martin as their City Manager. To do otherwise may come at a great detriment to the city and its progress. Thank you. Sincerely, Leonard Sauver, Construction Coordinator at the City of Coachella. I'm sorry. This one is also from Leonard. The next one is from Philip Bautista. Good morning, Mayor and City Council, City Manager, and City Employees. My name is Philip Bautista, a former City Council Member and current City Resident. I am reaching out today to commend the city and its positive direction in which we are heading. An example of this would be the Dia de los Muertos Run. There were so many people, and from all over the Coachella Valley. I'm grateful that they could see and experience our city. I know that the City Manager, Dr. Martin, is an integral part of the success of our city. As a council member, I know that Gabe always put the city first, so I am troubled by today's agenda. The last point is, as a taxpayer, why should we put him on leave and waste taxpayer money to replace him? It makes no sense fiscally. Thank you for your time, Philip Bautista. If it's not broke, don't fix it. This next one is from Monica Rodriguez. Dear Council Members, I would like to express my concerns regarding the scheduling of the City Manager's evaluation during a special meeting on a weekday when many residents are unable to attend. This arrangement raises questions about transparency and may lead residents to feel excluded from important decisions affecting our community. It is disheartening to consider the possibility of dismissing City Manager Mr. Martin without a clear rationale. As council members, your role is to prioritize the best interests of the community rather than to make decisions based solely on personal preferences. Mr. Martin has played a significant role in fostering business growth in Coachella and has consistently demonstrated professionalism and competence in his duties. His experience as both Economic Development Director and City Manager highlights his commitment to our city's development and its residents. It is concerning that he is facing scrutiny from council members just months before his formal evaluation. I urge all council members, including those newly appointed, to uphold transparency and engage with residents who have entrusted you with these important decisions. Thank you for considering their perspective. This next email is from Craig Armstrong. Good morning. My name is Craig Armstrong. I am a third-generation City of Coachella businessman and farmer. I am writing in support for the work and efforts Gabriel Martin has shown in his tenure as the City Manager, unlike any other position within the City of Coachella. From the mayor to the council members, Gabriel is engaged, visible, supportive, and a great leader for the city, its residents, and local businesses. His leadership, commitment, and transparency should be recognized and rewarded and learned from by the City Council and the mayor. Thank you for your serious consideration and valuation of the important community leader you have in Gabriel Martin. Regards, Craig Armstrong, Thermaculture Management. This next one is from... I guess we'll get to it. Hello, I am currently employed by the beautiful City of Coachella. I wish to comment on Dr. Martin. Dr. Martin has consistently been someone who exemplifies dedication, service, and leadership in the direction of our community and beautiful little city we all call home. We work long hours and weekends because we want to further the progress of this city for our loved ones, our neighbors, our friends, and our future. I feel Dr. Martin has helped... The progress of this city... I'm sorry. I feel Dr. Martin has helped establish a new era for the city in which we stop playing catch-up with our neighboring cities, and instead, we get ahead, especially in aspects such as resources for community, infrastructure, for the future, and opportunity for business. When I, a voting-and-tax-paying member of the city, found out that members of this council attempted to abruptly fire this man on the first week back from the holidays, I was deeply concerned and confused, and I still am now. I will close this... I will close with this. I, as a member of the city, expect a full, detailed explanation from each of the council members who are voting to remove this community leader and voting to disrupt the progress of our city. This next one is from the Turan family, Coachella residents. I am writing on behalf of my family, my husband, my daughter, and my kids. We want to know why you feel the need to destroy a family who lives and loves Coachella and has worked very hard to get Coachella moving in the right direction. Please tell me legally what he has done to lose his job and burden his Coachella native family. I am not in agreement with this decision. He is a good man, and we will not stand for this brutal act of power. He is our City Manager and also protects our finances. We do not want him to leave. We want him to keep us moving forward. Thank you, the Turan family, Coachella residents. This next one is from Maria Ruiz. Good morning. This special meeting is scheduled to remove our City Manager Gabriel Martin and appoint a new one is crazy. Our city is thriving. The changes that have been done during his leadership are visible, and they're tangible. Due to the expedited date and time, the City Council is not being transparent. You are trying to remove Gabriel without cause just because. You need to be accountable. This is not what we voted for. He has been a staple for the city. As we look around with over five new communities, five hundred-plus homes, library annex, Rancho Las Flores Park expansion, new businesses, Altura, Starbucks, Aldi, etc., he has brought over fifty million dollars to the community in grants and keeps working hard daily. He's also made our city safer with LED lights, pedestrian walkways, turn signals, bus stop benches, and new transit hubs, as well as a five-year new sheriff contract. He works directly with the school district and its interns. Nevertheless, he also started the Community Engagement Academy and tries very hard to involve himself in the community. He is not only a community leader, but lives in the city. Besides his work ethic, Gabriel is such a personable person. Easy to talk to, listens to the community, engages with us, down-to-earth human being. In addition, his staff is happy with their new four-year contract that he negotiated. The morale is palpable. City Council members that are against a better Coachella cannot get away with this. Maria Ruiz, proud Coachella resident. And I believe this is the last one. We have one more? Okay. This one is from Growing Coachella Valley. So hello, on behalf of the agricultural community, I want to say how appreciative we are for the collaboration between the city and agricultural community. The City Council Act Tour, the Planned Act Summit, and the Proposed Coachella Agricultural Products Promotional Campaign are all beneficial to both parties. We are thrilled to be in this partnership with the city and believe the City Manager has been instrumental in making this happen. Agriculture is the economic driver for the city, and engaging in collaborative efforts will have long-term benefits for everyone. We encourage you to keep City Manager Gabriel Martin in his position so we can continue this strong and positive momentum. Thank you, Janelle Percy and Growing Coachella Valley. And then, Treasure.
So we have one more. It says here, "I stand by him." Hello, my name is Jasmine Seha. As a Coachella resident, I strongly disagree with the board members who are attempting to fire our City Manager. This individual has done so much to elevate our city and has consistently demonstrated exceptional leadership. Under his guidance, we've seen significant improvement of infrastructure, public services, and economic development. He has fostered community engagement, prioritized the needs of our residents, and worked tirelessly to ensure that Coachella continues to thrive. Removing someone who has brought so much positive change to our city would be a mistake. We need leaders who truly care about our community, and he is undoubtedly one of them.
Thank you. Those are all the written comments.
Yeah, we've got everybody online, and I'm going to ask one more time here in the audience. Is there anybody else I'd like to address the City Council? If not, we're going to... All right.
Good afternoon. It's now afternoon. My name is Beatrice.
Good afternoon. It's now afternoon. Uh, my name is Beatrice Fernandez, and initially, when I first heard the news that both the city attorney and that the city manager were about to, were about to lose their jobs, I was disappointed, but I wasn't surprised. And, you know, it's very cowardly of you to set this meeting at 10:00 AM like so many other people have, have stated earlier. You've had staff members, you've had colleagues, you've had interns, business owners, and constituents. Guess what? You're not gonna silence Coachella. And so I'm here today to remind everyone to remember this moment when their terms are up for reelection. Because we will not be silenced. You serve us, not yourselves, and you should be disappointed in yourselves. You've disrespected all of us. Shame on you. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? If you can just state your name?
Good afternoon. Uh, my name is Ismael Ortiz. I've been outside since 10:00 AM. And I seek my way in. Uh, now it's two. And I just wanna say, uh, to the council, uh, more specifically to the three that, well, voted to terminate Gabriel to really reconsider. I mean, uh, the people came out, and the same way he supports his people, the people came to support him today. And there's evidence, there's evidence that Gabriel has done nothing but excellent things for Coachella. I've lived all my life in Coachella. I've seen the improvements. And I just hope you guys amend this decision and reconsider and hopefully reevaluate your guys' decision at the end of the day. And, um, just like it was stated earlier, you guys, you guys serve the people, so the people came out and they really voiced, uh, to keep Gabriel. Um, as our city manager, I hope you guys, uh, really consider you guys as citizens and representative. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to speak before we go into closed session?
I, I see none, and that'll be it. But, uh, I'm gonna allow council to make public comments. And they can say whatever they want up here.
I'll start. Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just wanna start off by sharing my opinion and obviously my concern as well. I wanna thank everybody who showed up at 10:00 AM and before. Um, even trying to come inside the, you know, the building inside City Hall, it was a little difficult. Um, I think that it's important for, um, us to recognize and think about our history and what our history has looked like. Um, to start off, i- it was very disappointing to see the meeting being scheduled for 10:00 AM. It doesn't happen anymore, and it shouldn't happen anymore, right? Um, I've been working with the county for six years, and I'll be the first one, and I know the supervisor also mentioned it. We've gotten called out many times for having meetings at 4:00 PM. And I think it's important that we acknowledge that. Um, to set a meeting at 10:00 AM when our working families can't make it and they don't have access to this, they don't have access to the information. Not everybody can join in on Zoom. Not everybody has the opportunity to also tell their employers, hey, give me a minute, let me sit through a five-hour meeting really quick. Um, not everyone has that opportunity, and so I wanna apologize to the community on behalf of this dais for allowing that to happen and for having a meeting at 10:00 AM when it should not have happened. But I also wanna remind folks that, um, you have the opportunity to make a difference every time you get a ballot. Every time you get a ballot, there's names on there, you have the opportunity to make changes and to hold us accountable. And anyone up here who tells you, I don't have to tell you anything, I don't have to answer to that, you need to continue to question them every single day. We work for you. We should be held accountable on any decision that we make. And I welcome you to also hold me accountable when the time comes, and it will come. And I know that because I'm up here, and we're not always going to see eye to eye, we're not always gonna share the same opinion. So come and talk to me. Let's, we need to communicate, we need to talk. But, um, for certain individuals to think that it's okay and that no one was gonna take notice or say anything about this 10:00 AM meeting, people showed up, and they will continue to show up, and I hope you continue to show up. Um, and it, this is, I, for me at least, it's a, a dream come true to see our city hall so packed. This is what we wanna see for every meeting, but I'm glad that you came out today. Um, and then I know that the mayor also mentioned it, but I wanna reiterate this because I think it's very important. Um, we are also taking note of city staff and folks that are very important to the city's progress. Um, and we know who spoke, we know who gave public comment, and this goes for our city employees. We will be watching if there is any kind or form of retaliation. Because that's not the kind of city that we are. We're a democracy. And you will not be retaliated against. This will not, that won't fly. We will not accept that. I will not accept that. I'm one person, but I will not accept that. And I welcome you to always share your opinion and not be afraid to speak out. You should not be afraid to speak out. That's not the way democracy works. And if we say that we're open and we're a progressive city, then we have to show it. Our actions have to align with our words. Um, so thank you to the community that came out. Obviously, Gabriel, it's evident the community said what they want us to do. They came here and they told us. I did not count how many, um, public comments. I, I lost track after 100 and plus, and five that were, um, against our city manager staying with us. Five. So I just wanna make that, you know, make it clear to everyone on this dais that if you have any question, if you have any doubt as to what our community is asking you to do, just recap really quickly on the five hours we, we sat here, and they already told us what they want us to do. It was very clear. Um, I'm gonna, we're gonna walk into closed session, obviously. I'm, I'm still very hopeful. I, I was against a 10:00 AM meeting. I will always be against a morning meeting unless it is an emergency, and it is important that we have to have one. Um, and I will always advocate for you. I will always do that, and I appreciate every single one of you that was here today. Thank you for being with us. Thank you for standing with us, and thank you for advocating for our gente and our community. That's it.
Any other speakers?
Mayor?
Uh, no, we, we just finished public comments, so we're gonna move on to council comments. Any other council comments? Uh, I'm gonna say a few words as, as mayor. I, um, let me just, uh, thank everybody that has come out today, this morning. It's been five hours of, of public comments, and honestly, I'm beginning to think that Gabriel deserves a raise. Because, because you had, uh, and, and all my years of being here, and I've been here for 19, and I've been 21 years at the County of Riverside, and I've gotten to work with regional governments. I don't know of any city manager that has gotten five hours of favorable testimony uh, regarding his character, regarding his work ethic, regarding the fact that this community has won under his tenure, regarding the fact that, uh, you've helped promote people from within. When you think about the staff, the businesses, the nonprofits, the seniors, the farmers, the school districts, I did get a text from our clergy, because they're the only one that's kind of missing here in this conversation. And our father, Father Francisco, who leads, you know, the Catholic Church, is the biggest, uh, has the biggest parishioners that attend the Catholic Church. He said, Coachella cares, Steve, and he says, this is a decision, chaos versus project, uh, progress and stability. And he sent that, he texted me. And I think when you think about progress and stability, and you think about what we've been doing as a city, uh, who we have leading the city on the day-to-day and leading the staff is very important. If you think about how the city has won, and I heard comments about how we love to send out, you know, Coachella's building a new park, there's new apartments, there's new roads, there's new grants that we got from the, the Resource Center to the expansion of the library annex, uh, to the new park that's coming. That wasn't any of us. Sure, we do a good job of advocating, of making some networks and connections, but the people that are writing the staff reports, the people that are leading and administering and working with teams to get these things done, it's our city manager and it's our executive team, it's all of our staff. And I'm so proud of the staff, by the way. I mean, it did take a lot of guts for you to be up here. It took a lot of, uh, like, uh, ganas and intestinal fortitude to stand in front of this council, knowing full well what may happen. And I, I agree with council member Bejan that our job is to protect you and know that you will be protected, you know, know that we ain't gonna stand for any type of retaliation. I will say this, that, you know, we have a very tough decision in, in, ahead of us, and I'm hoping that we do the right thing and listen to, uh, our members of the community. But for anybody who, if it doesn't go Gabriel's way, who wants this job, this is a horrible message to send. It is a horrible message to send. You have a community that is standing behind a city manager. You have a divided council. You have people that, um, wanna create chaos by, uh, creating change. In the last two days, we haven't even had our first official meeting of the year. And, and it's just, it's mind-boggling that they want, that you wanna move in such, such a manner. And that's, and this is a group that has been saying, we love transparency, and we need to be transparent, but this is, this isn't transparency. Not in my 19 years of office have I ever done this. Not in my 19 years of office have I ever pulled a 10 o'clock AM meeting, knowing that this is a working class. And try to move in such a manner, and it's, it's careless. It's also indicative of the fact that you don't know your community. You got a lot of people that show up. And I'm proud of you for showing up. I mean, it, it's, it's unbelievable the amount of people that have mobilized in one week. And if this meeting would've came at 6 o'clock, we, we would've been here till 2:00 in the morning, because there's a lot of people that can't make it because they're working. Because they're working, but I, I am just proud of you. I'm hoping that we do the right thing. There's also another gentleman in here, and, and this, that's Carlos Campus.
It's Father Francisco. And, and Carlos is a, he's shy, believe it or not. He's a very extremely intelligent. But, but I'm very proud of you and, and the fact of, of what you've done, you know, from, from cleaning the offices here to filming and to being an example to residents, to students, that if you wanna serve your community and, and, and come back home, that this is the town for you, and you've done that, and you've done it with integrity, you've done it so well, Carlos. And I'm hoping that the council reconsider's you too. You too. Because if I know something, is that a lot of these council members, they call you, they were calling you last week too, uh, to try to get more understanding or trying to figure out different processes, and you were nothing but professional with them. And it speaks volumes to you doing what's right and being professional and not doing what is belittled. And I think that's the issue here is that, you know, people, they wanna go at me. But I also want to in this community. And if the community wanted change, I think I would've been voted out, and I beat you, and I've beaten you. And I, uh, I, I gotta tell you. I, I gotta tell you that, that this community's not going anywhere, and the residents in this town, they're paying attention. They're paying attention, and they are gonna organize from afar. From a, they are gonna continue to organize, and we don't need chaos. We have so much going for, for us. We have so much going for us. And to do such a manner in the beginning of the year, Happy New Year's, I guess, from this council majority. You know, and it's just like, it's, it is very disrespectful, and it's not well thought out. So whoever your advisors are, because I know who you talk to from other communities, they don't know Coachella, and they're not Coachella. And they are not. So I look forward to the conversation in closed session, and where's yours, Denise?
Just wanna say thank you for when they came and, um, and do a little of your input. Um, you know, I was, I, I know that I wasn't giving you attention, but I was writing notes, and I'm a very note-taker person, so I apologize for not, um, giving you eye contact on that perspective. You know, I take notes, um, because, you know, it's very important to, to hear the dialogue, and sometimes you forget as you're listening to folks, so it's very important to listen to everyone's concerns and their input and from staff and community members, but also business owners. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
I think, I think all of you who've made your time here with us. Um, I think all those who made comments over Zoom. I think everyone who took time to send an email. Uh, and I do appreciate, um, staff's comments as well. Um, I can assure anyone, um, and it's always been my way of doing things, is that nobody would ever, ever, um, be retaliated against or would have ever be unprofessional against anyone. So I do thank all of you for making your way to us. Um, I appreciate your time with us. And thank you again for making your way out to our city chamber. Thank you.
So I wanna thank everybody for taking the time to come out here and speak your opinion. Um, to all the staff, I give you my word that I will defend every one of you guys as long as you guys are working hard. Okay, I will not retaliate. I will not stand for that. I have a job and I have a family too. And I do my job to its fullest. Anybody you come in contact and you ask them about me, they will tell you that I work hard. So thank you for coming.
Why?
Thank you.
Everyone asked, why that was announced today? Why 10:00 AM and why today?
We will be going into closed session.
That's what everyone asked.
Yeah, we're gonna, the council will move into closed session. Wait for Carlos. Alright, council returns back from closed session. Uh, Mr. City Attorney.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, council, in the closed session, on the three, uh, closed session items, and we do have two reportable actions. One of, uh, the first reportable action is, One of, uh, the first, uh, reportable action is, uh, on a vote of 3-2 with, um, Dr. Fig, Councilman Dr. Figueroa, Mayor Porchendalgado and Councilman, uh, Perez, uh, voting yes, and then Mayor Hernandez and Councilor Vitoria voting no. Uh, the, the action was to place Dr. Gabriel Martin on paid administrative leave immediately. The second action, um, reportable action the city council took was, uh, by unanimous vote, uh, five vote vote was to appoint, uh, Maritza Martinez as the acting, um, city manager immediately. Um, also do wanna report that the intent, um, also here is to have a subsequent, um, acting city manager appointment, which right now tentatively we're looking to put it on next Wednesday's regular city council meeting and that would be Mr. Bill Patterson, a former city manager here in the city. Thank you.
Hey! Five hours, change every five hours.
Alright. Thank you. Thank you. With that, um, we'll move on from closed session, we'll go on reports and requests and council comments, are there any council comments?
No, just.
Paying on you, three.
There is a last item, it's our city manager's comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, you know, appreciate the council giving me the opportunity to, we had this session for three years, working for the city for seven years has been the highlight of my professional career. Uh, this is a beautiful city. Uh, I came here, was adopted by the community, uh, no regrets. As you can see from today's outpour, I, you know, I have this community support, I did a great job and for that, you know, I, I am real grateful. I'd like to thank obviously, uh, council member, uh, Gonzalez, Baptista, Martinez, Sanchez, Galarza and Brown in the past for always supporting me. Uh, council member Viren, Mayor Hernandez for your constant support, thank you very much. To my staff, you know, thank you. You guys are the best team in the world, you are a championship team. The, the fact that you came out here and supported me and I hope the council is true to what they said, there is no retaliation. You know, you're gonna get a, a, a previous city manager, uh, that was here. So please, uh, I hope council keeps the word, but for me, from the bottom of my heart, thank you for speaking for me. Uh, it means the world to me, the rest of the team that came out during lunch, their lunchtime and their break time means the world to me. I, you know, you guys made my job a lot easier and I wouldn't have taken this job without this, uh, great team in place. In regards to my family, thank you, you know, for everything, you know, for forgiving me, forgive me from the late night meetings that I had, for missing, uh, uh, mov- movie nights, for missing, uh, practices, for, uh, uh, have, you know, having vacations cut short. Uh, and, you know, you guys never fought or you always, you always there for me and even today, you were here for me, going out there and talking. You know, you know, my, my kids fearful of leaving their school that they love. You know, my kids supporting me saying they would sell their toys to help daddy pay for bills if needed that, so you know, from the bottom of my heart, thank you, you know. Para mis padres, mi viejos, gracias por todo, todo el apoyo, el cariño que me dieron. Ustedes vinieron de Argentina conmigo como vives de dos años y acá están, acá están, gracias. Me conté sin ustedes, no esté acá hoy y jugará con su orgulloso de, de ustedes por todo que me hicieron. Los quiero mucho, mi hermano, los quiero mucho. Uh, the community, residents, thank you. You know, I, I gave you everything I could, let's sweat in tears every day. And you guys were amazing, you opened, you opened your, your, your hearts to us, to my family, you welcomed us, you adopted us. I'm probably the only Argentineo Coachelano, pero, I'll take it. Um, but thank you, you guys were amazing, today's outpour, community love, I mean, I, 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 I'll walk away with, uh, my head held up high because I know I did a great job. Today's decision wasn't based on my performance, fact. So thank you very much from the bottom of my heart, I really did enjoy being your city manager, so thank you very much.